Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, April 20th regular meeting of the Boulder City Council. We will start as usual with a few quick announcements. The first announcement is as usual, if you would like exposure notifications on your phone, in case you have been exposed to someone else who has COVID-19, you can sign up or learn more at www dot add your phone dot com. And if you would like more information on getting your COVID vaccine and sign up for notifications when you're eligible, I think everyone is now. You can get updates on boko.org slash COVID vaccine notify signup. And finally, boards and commissions. There are a few openings still on our boards and commissions and we're looking for volunteers to join us and city service on these boards. The three boards that still have openings are the Boulder Junction Access District, two of the boards, one for parking and one for travel demand management. And the third board is the Beverage Licensing Authority. If you're interested in applying for one of these boards, please visit the webpage at bouldercolorado.gov slash boards dash commissions. And with that, Alicia, would you call the role?
Yes, sir, and good evening, everyone. Councilmember Brockett. Friend.
Here.
Joseph.
Present.
Nagel.
Here.
Swetlik.
Present.
Wallack.
Present.
Weaver.
Here.
Yates.
Here.
Enya.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Excellent. Thank you, Alicia. And we have one change to the agenda tonight that would be to add item 3G, Resolution 1288 urging passage of state and federal legislation to prevent gun violence. So if I could have someone make a motion to amend the agenda. So moved. Very good. We have a motion in a second. Any objections to amending the agenda? Great. Seeing none, with that, we will move on to open comment. Before we do that, Brenda, I'd like you to please walk us through the guidelines for open comment. You are on mute, Brenda. Sure.
Okay, can you see my screen or not yet?
We can see you, but not just your face.
Okay, great. Let me. There we are. There's our screen. Um, and we're on the wrong slide. Lovely. Okay, so thank you so much for joining us tonight for open comment. To keep these meetings safe from those who might disrupt, who are not members of our community. We have instituted a few rules as we moved into virtual space more than a year ago. So I'll just go over them very quickly. This meeting has been called to order to conduct business of the city of Boulder. Anything that disrupts or delays or interferes with the meeting is prohibited. The time for speaking will be limited and you may only speak when recognized by Mayor Weaver. Each person must be showing their full name in order to unmute it. If you are not showing your full name currently, please go ahead and send me your name in the Q and A box and I'm happy to change it for you. No video is permitted other than employees, city officials and invited speakers or presenters. Although we do know that a few of you have sent in presentations ahead of time and we will be showing those for you during your comments. The person presiding at the meeting shall enforce the rules by asking me to mute anyone who is violating those rules. On the chat function is disabled, but you may use the Q and A box to reach out to me with any technical questions that you have. It should not be about the content of the meeting. And only the host and individuals designated by the host will be permitted to share their screen during the meeting. Sam, we, I've been informed that we're having a few troubles with channel eight. We're currently not on air, so I just wanted to check in on that before we proceed further. If you don't mind.
No, look, do we know how long it might be or any ETA?
Emily, any word from Brian, from Ryan on what our needs are?
Not at the moment, but I'm going to check with him right now and see if he has a timeframe for us.
Great.
Great. And while we're waiting on that, I think it's probably worth noting that all of us in the city council, I'll speak for myself. Very happy to see that there was a guilty verdict in the Derek Chauvin trial today regarding the murder of George Floyd. Seems to me like justice has been done in this case. And if any other council members would like to speak to that while we wait, I would invite those comments. Aaron.
Thanks for bringing that up, Sam. Absolutely agree. But just say that I think it's more that the murderer has been held accountable and justice is a long way off. George Floyd is no longer with us.
Junie.
Yeah. I was happy as well to see the verdict and I think I'm sure a lot of the country is happy to see it as well. But even when I was watching it, I think to me, again, I guess what was sad, right? It's a, it was a bittersweet situation is that black people have to march. They have to organize to get justice. They have to fight years. They have to be on the street. And I'm looking forward to a time in America where we don't have to do that. Where justice is something that is normalized. It's not, we don't have to do all that work. And I hope that I guess moving forward, we have our own role to play as well, not just be passive. What, what's the word? Be passive to what's happening in our society. We have to advocate lobby and even as a council as well, we have to put, you know, we have to put what's, we have to put actions behind our words. I'm also learning about the George Floyd and Policing Act. Maybe that's something as a council, we need to look into supporting. And also as I was thinking, what we can do and how we can elevate. Because what I heard today as well from, I believe the AG of Minneapolis was, that's an act of accountability. We're not there yet when it comes to justice. So we have a lot to do. And I was thinking even just looking at our own police department, I have to say, I don't know what is the makeup of our own police department. But I've seen pictures and the pictures that I've seen, it doesn't look as diverse. And I think we can also do those little things that will take us to that point of accountability. So again, I think that accountability and justice that we're looking for, it is not just in one thing. It's so many things that we have to do in this country to get us closer to that justice, to get across the justice line. So again, I'm happy to see the verdict, but we still have a lot to go and a long way to go.
Very good. I'll check in. Brenda, how are we doing on channel eight?
We are still tinkering a bit to see if we can get the sound up and running. We have picture, but we don't have sound. So I'm looking right now to try and get that connection going back, back and forth again. So maybe just a couple more minutes.
Okay, we'll give it, we'll give it one or two more minutes.
Thank you.
Sam, do we have that slide that gives the other ways that you can participate by watching the meeting that we can put up in the interim?
That is a good idea. I had no idea if we had that slide. Brenda, is there a slide that shows the different channels that people can use to watch the meeting?
I can find or build one quickly. Let me go ahead and do that.
When we have our channel eight technical difficulties resolved, we'll be moving on to open comment. Just a heads up for everyone, it will be two minutes per speaker tonight because we have full open comment. Our first three speakers, once we're ready, will be Beth Reese, Maya Raphael and Matt Benjamin. So when Brenda gives me the thumbs up, we will start with Beth.
So we are still not working, Sam. So I will go ahead and I'm multitasking, trying to find that slide. Adam, sorry about that. So, excuse me. So let me, I think as we go, we can start to put those materials together.
Okay, that's great. And I believe if you go on to bouldercolorado.gov onto the city council page of the website that's linked on the homepage, you'll be able to find options for viewing the meeting. It won't help if people are trying to do it on channel eight, but if we can get a slide up, that'll be helpful. So let's go ahead and move into open comment. As I said, we'll start with Beth Reese, Maya Raphael and Matt Benjamin. Beth, you are up whenever you're ready.
You should be able to unmute that.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
We can.
My name is Beth Reese and I live in the Tantra Park area and I'm opposed to development at CU South. CU's development of the South property requires Boulder residents to pay $25 million to destroy a critical habitat by developing a sprawling campus with no definitive site plan in a flood plain while Boulder is facing $375 million in unmet infrastructure needs in return for an unproven flood mitigation attempt. CU's project will destroy vital habitat at a time when we should be restoring and improving national natural biodiversity. This development will require the taxpayers to pay for trucking in thousands of tons of filter causing disruptions for months on end in our neighborhood. This already congested part of town will have an estimated 7,000 additional vehicles per day. The proposed 3,000 seat sports facility would impose overwhelming traffic and public nuisance risks. The development will add more than 2,000 new residents as well as spectators and participants at sporting events and require parking needs for visitors, employees, students and staff. Light pollution from the congested area will destroy the dark sky conditions and noise pollution will significantly diminish the quality of life in my neighborhood and in all of South Boulder. $25 million would go a long way to help with the current unmet infrastructure needs the city of Boulder is facing. I don't want to pay for CU to destroy this critical habitat, my neighborhood and our beautiful city. Please take a step back and consider how residents of the future will judge the decisions made today and in the future. Thank you very much for serving and carefully weighing the issues.
Thank you, Beth. Next we have Maya Raphael, Matt Benjamin and Eric Tussi. Maya?
Good evening. My name is Maya Raphael. I would like to ask that city council keep the streets around Pearl Street blocked off from vehicles for outdoor dining space permanently. If that's not possible, I would like to ask city council to at least keep the parking spaces blocked off for outdoor dining while allowing vehicle access. I believe that the negative effect of closing off roads and reducing parking is outweighed by the economic and cultural community-wide benefits of enjoying a larger portion of Pearl Street's businesses, especially when the weather is nice. I understand that the city's ability to keep the streets closed off for outdoor dining may partially hinge on the temporary executive order 20093. However, hopefully that order will be extended beyond the pandemic. Blocking off more roads downtown to vehicle traffic would alleviate some of the congestion on the sidewalks that are already being used for outdoor dining. Restaurants would also be able to bring in more revenue from increased seating ability. And the restaurants that have purchased tents for outdoor dining in cold weather would be able to continue reaping the benefits of those investments during the winter months. Even as we inch closer towards herd immunity, the prospect of being in a crowded bar or restaurant may still worry people as we've gotten used to spending so much time distance from strangers. The atmosphere of Pearl Street was great before the pandemic, but being able to walk around and see so many community members and tourists sitting outside brings a whole new sense of vibrancy to the downtown area. I hope you'll consider making this positive change by keeping the streets or parking spaces permanently blocked off for outdoor dining purposes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Maya. Next we have Matt Benjamin, Eric Tussi and Kristen Eller. Matt?
I am not seeing Matt Benjamin on the list, Sam. We do have one caller who has called in by phone. I am going to text that caller with my phone number to see if we can't get that person's name. So if that's you, please be on the lookout for a text message from Brenda at the city. So we should move to Eric Tussi, please.
Very good.
And here comes Eric.
Hi, my name is Eric Tussi. I just wanted to thank you for taking the time to listen to our, our concerns. I wanted to follow up on the recent crab neighborhood Zoom meeting. The neighbors wanted to say that the city and Parks and Recs does a lot of things well. They have parks, pools, public spaces, great trail system, events on them all. They make large investments in open space and they invest in natural place planners. And these things are great. But the new direction of the Boulder reservoir is not one of the things they're doing well. The city has spent millions of dollars on open space lands and parks. And these spaces give us peaceful areas for the public to enjoy. They're places for wildlife to survive. The reservoir itself is a very unique place. People enjoy the space. Animals live there. They breed, nest. There are seasonal closures to reduce human impacts. But the rez over the years has seen increasing human activities. This year during COVID, there are already 30 plus special events scheduled. And that's equal to back in 2012, when the Boulder Reservoir Master Plan stated that they would not increase events over the last three-year period between 2009 and 2012. We're already there again during a time of COVID. Is this activity forces out wildlife? We no longer have sandpipers visit here. Last week we had noise complaints at seven o'clock from an event. May 7th, there's a scheduled drive-in fundraiser. It's listed as eight to 10 in the city calendar, but it's actually an eight o'clock and the 10 o'clock show that goes till midnight. The drive-in comedy where typically honking horns is a form of applause. The organization's very upset to hear about these issues. Stasio Valsfield seems to be a better option. We will continue to hear from people and groups in the Boulder area that do not support opening the rez at night. How sustainable is it to drive four miles out of town for such an event?
Thank you, Eric.
Hundreds of people drive.
Thank you, Eric. I'm sorry, your time is up. We appreciate your, your comments. Thank you. Next, we have Kristen Eller, Austin Bennett and William Carroll. Kristen?
Hello. Hello, councilmembers. I'm currently a CU graduate student and I support the annexation at CU South and your continued work to see this project to fruition. I hope the annexation at CU South will create new affordable housing in South Boulder for workers like me who currently struggle to find housing in Boulder. And the proposed flood mitigation plan will protect many people in our community from the disaster that we saw in 2013. Look, we all love open space and dislike traffic, but the city needs to start meeting the needs of its students and workers. So let's hold you to developing affordable housing, which would increase my quality of life. Not to mention increased housing close to where people work is environmentally friendly, decreases commuting traffic and encourages walking or biking to work. So I urge you to know that you have a lot of support on this measure and the creation of new housing. I also want to mention council's ongoing involvement with SB 2162 regarding GLD population. I was disturbed to read council member Yates' op-ed over the weekend, which contained demonstrably false statements from SB 62. I urge all council members to check in with Sheriff Pele, DA Doherty and the Colorado ACLU and the other organizations who represent actual prime and racial providing survivors. Let's make sure our discourse is rooted in truth. It serves no one to instigate fear that's not based in fact. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kristen. Next we have Austin Bennett, William Carroll and Kimmon Harmon. Austin?
Shout out, shout out to the last person before me. I'm going to be repeating a lot of what she said. I know I'm a couple of weeks late to the big meeting around SB dash 62, but I wanted to add my piece to the pile anyhow. And especially make sure that city council members, don't forget the dozens of testimonies that were given weeks ago in favor of SB 2162. I wanted to directly address Mr. Yates' recent op-ed, which was frankly, pack of lies. 2162, Wall Street's more dangerous and it's not going to stop arrests of violent crimes. What it will do, event the full power of the carceral state from coming down on working-class people like myself by flinging them in essentially debtor's prison for the crime of not being able to pay bail. It concerns me, it really does, that after several dozen of my fellow citizens defied in favor of SB 21-62 and talks at length about what bill does and does not do, what the benefits will be that Mr. Yates still wrote that article. Thank you.
And you, Austin. Next we have William Carroll, Kimmon Harmon and Judith McGill. William?
I am also not seeing William. So perhaps we go to Kimmon. And Emily, if you are ready with that presentation, I know you're busy in the background. Great. And you should be able to unmute Kimmon. I think I did. Are you good?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. So I don't need the slides quite yet, but I'll call for them. Thanks. Thanks, councilmembers and city staff for listening to the citizens of Boulder. I would like to express my concern with the city of Boulder going into an unfair and costly agreement with CU for the sake of one dam. First, let me state that I have no problem with the city constructing the dam on the very outer edge of CU's property. It is much needed. What I do have a problem with is that in order to do this, the taxpayers of Boulder have to pay millions to make CU happy. And only a small portion of taxpayers, like about 2,300 people, will reap the benefit of this one dam. What plan does the city have to mitigate flooding in other neighborhoods? Bear Creek and Skunk Creek caused millions of dollars of damage to the Martin Acres neighborhood as is evidenced in these slides. First slide, please. As you can see in the first slide, Bear Creek was roaring down along the bike path and soon overtopped its channel. Next slide, please. And the next slide, Bear Creek began overflowing into Martin Acres near Martin Park and into neighborhoods, into neighbors' basements and crawl space. The flow was very violent and luckily no one was swept away, but they could have been. Next slide, please. And this next slide shows, next slide? Please. Okay, yeah. So this is the part where they, where people could have been swept, swept away. And next slide, please. And this slide, next slide. Hello. Next slide, please.
Sorry, there's a bit of a delay.
Okay, sorry. And this slide shows Lake Martin, as we call it, where drainage could not keep up with Bear Creek and groundwater rising. I personally live in the northern part of Martin Acres and the Skunk Creek drainage flooded our crawl space and many others. There has to be a better use of our tax dollars than to fund CU's fourth campus being built on a flood plain. And if Boulder's going to pay $66 million for a dam to benefit 260 downstream structures and 2,300 people, it should be ready to pay that for every other vulnerable neighborhood. If the answer is yes, where is all that money coming from? If no, why the special treatment for Fraser Meadows? Schools, police, firefighters, roads, et cetera, are a good use of tax dollars because they benefit the wider community. It seems your negotiations are flawed. CU gets everything they want. Fraser Meadows gets what it wants, but the rest of Boulder citizens are left with higher water bills, increased traffic, et cetera, et cetera. Thanks for considering all this, you guys. I really appreciate it. I know you're doing a lot of work. So I really appreciate you listening to us all. Thanks.
Thank you, Kimmon. And I believe that we have Bill Carroll now. If we want to go back to Bill and then after Bill Carroll will be Judith McGill and Evan Rabbits.
Can I interrupt for a second, Sam? Just that I, I heard, I got a text from Matt Benjamin that he never received the Zoom link. And so that I know somebody else didn't show up, so I don't know if we have contact info for people who aren't present yet, but if we can send out Zoom information, that would be great to those people.
I just want to let you know I sent Matt Benjamin the link just a couple of minutes ago.
Thank you.
And also, Sam, we are back on air.
Awesome. All good news. And I think we're ready for Bill Carroll.
Okay, hopefully you can hear me. Thanks to the city council for letting us speak. I'm here today to talk about crime in Boulder. My car was vandalized recently with about $2,000 worth of damage. And at the end of the day, my car is just a piece of property. But what I uncovered when attempting to report the crime is what I really found unsettling. I've lived in Boulder on and off for 15 years and I've been away in LA for the last four years working for a company in Hollywood. When I moved back to Boulder, what I wasn't prepared for was drug use out in the open, alcohol consumption and criminal activity. I'd experienced that sort of stuff as the norm in Los Angeles, but never in Boulder. In 15 years of living in Boulder on and off, I'd never seen anything like that. But now bike chop shops operate with impunity on the Boulder paths, the multi-use paths, especially in the Goose Creek area. The paths are no longer safe for my 12-year-old daughter. This problem comes down to one common theme, and that is no consequences. I've spoken at length with the Boulder police when attempting to report the vandalism to my car. They won't even come out to take a report. The reason they say they won't bother to take a report is because the prosecutors won't do anything. So people aren't arrested, people don't go to jail, there are no consequences. And so criminals come back and vandalize and steal again and again and again. This is shocking to me because this is not the Boulder that I left four years ago. Boulder, as it is now, resembles LA more than it does Boulder. So after speaking with Boulder police, what they told me, no arrests, no consequences. I spoke with the property manager. Property managers are frustrated because no matter how much video evidence, photographic evidence they compile, the police can't act because the prosecutors won't act. And what ends up happening is Boulder residents get frustrated with crime because people who are removed from the properties are simply ticketed and they can return within minutes to continue. So bikes get stripped of parts and criminals just continue doing crime. A lack of consequences does not help criminals. It's not compassionate. And it won't help people living in Boulder. A policy of no consequences will only increase crime in Boulder. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Bill. Next we'll go back to Matt Benjamin. And then after Matt, we'll have Judith McGill and Evan Rabbits. Matt?
You should be able to unmute now, Matt.
Awesome. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you, members of council for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Matt Benjamin and I live in South Boulder. I wanted to start by thanking council and especially staff for staying the course and continuing to chip away at the multitude of challenges flood mitigation at CU has brought forth. As of today, we can say that every one of the eight guiding principles stated in the Boulder Valley Camp plant has either been met or is currently being addressed. This has been a long and arduous process and at times it seemed like flood mitigation was never going to happen or that the positions of the city and CU were irreconcilable. And yet, here we are. We have come too far to walk away now. Since the 2013 flood, we have had three presidents and NASA designed, built, launched, landed the Perseverance Rover on Mars, not to mention just yesterday flying a helicopter on the red planet. A testament to the limitless ability to accomplish immense feats when a group of people is unified around a common goal. It is also a helpful reminder that in the same timeframe, we have not dug an ounce of dirt toward building flood mitigation. This has been among the toughest 12 months in the history of our city. We couldn't save those lives lost during COVID or the shooting, but we can provide the blanket of protection to save the lives of nearly 3,000 people that are still in harm's way along South Boulder Creek. If there is one bright spot in the midst of all the chaos, pain, If there is one bright spot in the midst of all the chaos, pain, and grief, it's that our community has shown tremendous unity and resiliency. We have in many ways rediscovered our value of togetherness. Let us continue that spirit of togetherness in all that we do as friends, neighbors, and as a community. A challenge before us is to not go back to the ways we used to do things, where polarization and divisiveness has all but crippled our civic process. Now is the time to show that we can live up to the values that we give platitudes toward, and as a community, choose a new path forward, this time together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Matt. Next, we have Judith McGill, Evan Rabbits, and Tanya Dewery. Judith?
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Very good. Good evening, everyone. I've lived in Boulder for almost twenty years, and I asked to speak at this forum because I want this place to remain the safe community we all love. SB sixty-two, as written, is absolute insanity. We must block its passage. Further, we must stop the rise in crime by actually enforcing laws and reopening the jails. Late last year, I was the victim of property theft. On the one day I left my guard down, let my guard down and didn't lock my gate, someone walked onto my driveway, opened the gate to my backyard, entered my garage through the side door, and stole approximately fifteen hundred dollars' worth of my property as my son slept a few feet away. Police couldn't do anything because the jails are closed. A few months later, I was a victim again when someone stole my mail, including my W-2 bearing my social security number. By then, I had security cameras placed around my home and provided a screenshot of the thief's car, but the police couldn't do anything because the jails are closed. Neither of these crimes is a felony, but according to SB sixty-two, these are crimes we should just tolerate. There will be no accountability. Do we really think handing out tickets to criminals will deter criminal behavior? Enabling criminal behavior by looking the other way is not merciful to criminals. Holding criminals accountable for criminal behavior will protect our community. SB sixty-two, as written, would destroy Boulder. It must be stopped, and our jails must be reopened. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith. Next, we have Evan Rabbits, Tanya Dewery, and Ron DePue. Evan?
Hi. Boulder lost ten people. It's not senseless. It's because, even though eighty-six percent of Democrats and fifty-five percent of Republicans want the assault weapons ban reinstated, Congress is inert, bought off. When I lived in Guatemala in the eighties, two hundred thousand were being slaughtered by their army with assault weapons from the US government. Four hundred and forty villages were admittedly machine-gunned on the plazas, the corpses stuffed in the town wells. Even on relatively peaceful Lake Atitlan, where I lived and worked, three friends were killed by the army one winter. I gave up building a home for myself there and returned to Boulder. I read in Howard Zinn's People's History of the US that by nineteen seventy-five, all the polls showed that sixty-five percent of Americans were opposed to all foreign military aid. We learned it from Vietnam, Laos, and Cambodia. I thought if that was a legal vote, not just polls, then my friends and millions around the world would still be alive. Of course, the people are opposed to war. Only the military-industrial-congressional-academic-media complex wants it. So I've worked thirty-two years for more direct democracy. Spearheading Boulder's failed nineteen ninety-three Voting by Phone Ballot Initiative and Boulder's twenty-eighteen online petitioning referendum, which passed seventy-one to twenty-nine percent. Direct democracy is ending the drug war. We made cannabis legal. Direct democracy did close the gun show loophole in Colorado way back in two thousand. Maybe if the city cooperates and makes our online petitioning work right, we can someday say we helped end mass murder locally and internationally by making government by the people work for ordinary people. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan. Next, we have Tanya Dewery, Ron DePue, and Kathy Joyner. Tanya?
Yes, thank you, city council. My name is Tanya Dewery, and I live in Martin Acres. I have been a South Boulder resident since nineteen ninety-nine, and I'm strongly opposed to any development at CU South. I don't think flood mitigation should be coupled with this annexation agreement. Taking as much land as needed for the protection of our residents should be our city's priority. I urge the board to consider Boulder's core values of environmental protection and fiscal responsibility in relation to the annexation agreement. Instead of spending twenty-five million dollars or more of taxpayer money for costs associated with developing on a floodplain, a much better alternative would be to do a land swap with the North Boulder Area Three Planning Reserve land. Not only does this land sit high and dry, but it does not border any residential neighborhoods and would be a much better fit from a traffic standpoint. With the already jammed-up thirty-six Table Mesa and Broadway options, it's likely that a majority of the additional seven thousand trips per day will seek a shortcut through our neighborhoods. Please consider how this will negatively impact Martin Acres and all South Boulder neighborhoods. I am asking that it be written into the annexation agreement that when and if CU desires to build its next Boulder campus, the city and county fully analyze whether a land exchange for city-owned land at the planning reserve might be a win-win alternative for all parties. We understand that the land isn't currently ready to be annexed. That should not be an issue, considering CU will be ready to build for four to five years anyway. Since the planning department has begun their urban services study, that's already the first step in this process. In addition, this should be able to be done quickly, since only a portion of the land needs to be studied. Not only would the land exchange save the taxpayers millions of dollars, preserve valuable open space and endangered wildlife, but it would preserve the South Boulder neighborhoods and the entrance to our beautiful city. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Tanya. Next, we have Ron DePue, Kathy Joyner, and Riley Mancuso. Ron?
Hi, I'm Ron DePue. I've lived in Martin Acres for thirty-eight years. Constructing a full-fledged campus, including housing for twenty-three hundred people, academic buildings, sports stadiums, et cetera, in a flood zone makes no sense whatsoever. The annexation agreement that is written for CU South needs to be done with a land exchange in which CU gets land at the North Boulder Area Three Planning Reserve, and the city gets the land at CU South. Area Three land is not in a floodplain, unlike CU South. A CU campus at Area Three will save Boulder millions of dollars and campus area fill dirt and other site improvements totally unrelated to flood protection for Fraser Meadows. Those millions of Boulder tax dollars are needed for improving citywide infrastructure that will benefit city residents, as well as provide affordable housing, older traffic mitigation, climate action, and long overdue maintenance on open space lands. The other issue is that traffic on Table Mesa is already beyond its capacity. Oh, there should be some pictures that I sent in. I don't know if you have those.
I don't believe so.
I don't think we received those, Ron. Sorry.
I sent a PowerPoint in. Anyway, the traffic study that was done for CU is a bad joke. It chose the least traffic days of the year that it could possibly find with schools closed or only remote learning to make a completely false impression of the amounts of traffic in South Boulder. Please, don't build a new campus in South Boulder. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Next, we have Kathy Joyner, Riley Mancuso, and Dr. Michael Tuftley. Kathy?
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. I'd like to thank council members and staff for the ongoing public engagement process related to the CU South annexation. The city has provided an impressive number of opportunities for public feedback, and you've heard a lot about the things that really matter, such as flood mitigation, transportation, and housing, to name a few. We commend staff and the negotiating team for making the hard choices required to make this the best deal possible for both parties. I'd like to acknowledge what appears to be significant action by CU, which may serve to make decisions easier with a greater assurance of success. From what I understand, CU has agreed to the concept of the city's right to de-annex the property should the city be unable to complete the flood mitigation project. And related to possible sale of CU property after annexation, the city and CU are working on terms to establish the city's first right of refusal. There are a number of significant issues, many of which were identified through the public engagement process and on which the city and CU appear to be aligned. I'll mention just a few. First, the designation of a limited impact zone with buffers on the west side of the site designed to minimize effects of development to adjacent residential neighborhoods. Second, compliance with building height limits aligning with the city charter, with buildings sloping gently from open space lands to the adjacent neighborhood. And third, the establishment of a traffic trip cap that would monitor traffic for compliance and implement mitigative measures should that cap be exceeded. You have every right to be proud of how productive and helpful the public engagement process has been. Our comments have helped guide staff and the negotiating team to seek inclusion of issues that are clearly important to the public. This is the very goal of a successful engagement process, and I'd like to commend CU and city staff and negotiators for their hard work in ensuring that we are all being heard and that our comments matter. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Kathy. Next, we have Riley Mancuso, Michael Tuftley, and Brenda Sone. Riley?
Hey, what up, city council? So I'm just calling in to remind you all that all these assholes from Safer Boulder are lying assholes, just like Bob Yates, who printed a bunch of egregiously false information about SB sixty-two in the Daily Camera recently. We've been over this. This bill affects pre-trial detention. Pre-trial detention with bail set means that it's meant to function where people are able to pay the bail and not be in jail while awaiting their trial because they are innocent until proven guilty. So the only difference with SB sixty-two is that where previously, if a rich person broke into your car, they could be out of jail by paying bail, now whether somebody is rich or poor, they'll be treated the same and be out of jail while awaiting their trial prior to any conviction. The alarmism connecting homelessness with crime, with drug use, with a lack of safety in our community is all hysteria. It is not evidence-based. All evidence suggests that harm reduction approaches to homelessness and drug use are the solution, not more criminalization. I was talking to a man last night by Goose Creek in the snow who was told that he needed to move his tent or face charges for trespassing or camping by the next day at noon. It was a blizzard. It took me an hour to drive home that night because I could hardly see in front of my car, and this man was told to move his tent in that weather? He said, "I'll take the charge," because the alternative was dying, was suffering exposure and frostbite. So that's why criminalization doesn't work, because if you lock that man up for a misdemeanor, you can either choose to lock him up for the rest of his life for not having a house, or you have to admit that at some point, you know, you're going to have to let him back out, and criminalizing him has only made his homelessness and his situation worse.
Thank you, Riley. Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Next, we have Michael Tuftley, Brenda Sone, and Deborah Biasca. Michael?
Michael asked us to, is here, but asked us to play a narrated slideshow.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present some information that I have come up with from the draft traffic study produced by the Fox Tuttle Transportation Group. In that report, it states that the traffic along Table Mesa Drive has been nearly flat for the last twenty years. I used the same data in the Fox Tuttle Report to calculate volumes at three locations. I produced the same results, but came to vastly different conclusions on these data, and they are. So on Broadway north of Table Mesa from nineteen eighty-two to twenty thirty-five, there's been a twelve percent growth in traffic. On Table Mesa Drive, east of Broadway, from nineteen eighty-five to twenty thirty-five, there's been a thirty-two percent growth. This is clearly not flat. And finally, on Broadway south of the city limits, from nineteen eighty-two to twenty thirty-five, there's been a hundred and ten percent growth. That's quite a bit. In addition, Fox Tuttle Group collected data at various locations in two thousand and nineteen and November of two thousand and twenty. Traffic data collected in two thousand and twenty should be rejected due to the reduction in traffic due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Finally, Fox Tuttle Group neglected to collect traffic data on key residential streets located in Martin Acres, such as Ash, Morehead, and Martin Drive. These key streets link Table Mesa with Baseline and also Broadway, and these are easily thoroughfares that would be used from people living in the CU South annexation. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Michael. Next, we have Brendan Sone, Deborah Biasca, and Michael D. Brendan?
Hi, council. My name is Brendan Sone, and I'm a law student at CU. I'm here to request that once city council meetings return to an in-person format, the public is still allowed to participate remotely. For one of my year-long classes at CU Law, a course requirement is to participate each semester in a public meeting by giving public comment. When I gave comment last semester, which was remote, of course, I was nervous even standing in my bedroom in front of my computer screen, delivering only my audio to city council and listeners. Even though it may have been a more valuable experience for me, I have to say I was relieved I did not need to go to City Hall and stand in front of a microphone to deliver my comment. There are almost certainly many others like me who want to give input and have valuable comments to provide, but are simply too nervous to present their ideas in person. But aside from not having to face a peer of public speaking, concerns for equality and democracy all point towards allowing both in-person and remote participation in public meetings. First, equality. Many in Boulder who wish to give comment are unable to travel to City Hall, perhaps because of lack of access to transportation or because of a physical impairment. Allowing remote participation potentially puts those who cannot travel to City Hall on equal footing with those who can. Second, democracy. Allowing remote participation allows participation by a larger community of people. I think we can all agree that more public participation leads to better, more democratic decisions. Those who fear public speaking might also find it easier to deliver public comment remotely. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Brendan. Next, we have Deborah Biasca, Michael D., and Sherri Hack. Deborah?
Thank you. I'm Deborah Biasca, and I live in South Boulder. First, yes, CU South is crucial to flood protection, but the wise approach is not to kowtow to the university's whims, as appears from negotiations thus far, but to decouple downstream flood mitigation, which virtually no one opposes, from the construction of a CU campus, which many see as a terrible plan for that location. Constructing a full-fledged campus, including academic buildings, sports stadiums, and maybe affordable housing for twenty-three individuals, note CU's vague messaging like "it's complicated" or "it depends on what you call affordable." This huge development in a flood zone is bad business. It's not climate smart either, as it would bring seven thousand more cars daily to South Boulder roadways already gridlocked for hours each weekday. And coupling flood mitigation with CU's expansion puts the taxpayers on the hook for upwards of twenty-five million dollars for the thousands of tons of fill dirt CU is asking the city to dump there to raise their development area out of the floodplain. Let's think about that for a minute. Won't filling in low-lying areas have a displacement effect so that water, which naturally seeks out low-lying areas, would be diverted elsewhere toward the dam structure, making the dam more costly to construct, possibly less reliable? I have no issue with proposed flood mitigation, but the campus should be redirected to a suitable building site, the land at the North Boulder Planning Reserve. CU publicly says that they don't want to wait for the land swap process to play out. Yet, their spokespersons attempt to mollify our concerns for their development by saying that their plans are in the future. Depending on the day, those plans are ten years out, or seven, or five. You and I both plan to be here far longer. You and I both plan to be here far longer than each of those intervals. Please plan wisely for all of us. We have the time it takes. Institute the land swap process immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Next, we have Michael D., Sherry Hack, and Claudia Team. Michael?
Hello, Council. Can you see and hear me?
We can hear you.
Can't see me?
We don't, we don't have video for our speakers, so you're up, Michael.
That's a shame. I got all dialed up. Well, you have to trust me. I'm very handsome. Before I get, begin, I'd just like to thank all you guys for your hard work. I know that you're all overworked and underpaid, and what you're doing here is really a labor love for the city. And no matter what side of any particular issue that we're on, I want to thank the Council for its time dedication. Even though I'm a 16-year resident of Central Boulder, I've never, I've never done anything like this before, so, you know, get involved in community issues. So, please bear with me while I stumble through this. I was compelled to reach out to you because I've had a couple separate instances of violence and near-violence that I wanted to share with you. I know you've heard about this from other residents, but I think every story matters, right? I'm a pretty avid user of the Boulder bike paths. And on more than one occasion, I've seen residents of the encampments be aggressive and feign violence to people using the pass. But most recently, I saw that happen to a young mother pushing a baby. And, you know, I'm a grown man. I can handle myself, but I really worried about how she felt and her safety around that. So I'd like to have you guys consider those encampments even more. Secondly, about a year ago, I invited my nephew to move here from California. He's a, he's a craftsman, and I thought it would be a great place for him to, to live and work. And within about two months of moving here, he, as he was leaving the store, he was slashed on the chest by somebody with a knife who was asking for money that he didn't give them. So he turned tail, and he went back to California, and I have to deal with his mom, my sister, about why this is happening in the city that she felt was a safe one to send him to. Just a couple stories for you guys to consider as you deal with these tough issues. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, and thanks for taking the time to speak to us. Next, we have Sherry Hack and Claudia Team. Sherry?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great, thank you. We have an epidemic in Boulder of homeless drug addicts living on our streets, setting up illegal encampments, burglarizing our homes, hassling us for money on every street corner, and just discarding used needles where people can get stuck by them. Boulder is overrun by homeless addicts threatening our lives, our livelihoods, polluting the environment with their trash and camps, going to the bathroom in public and being mean to their dogs. One of these transients threatened to shoot me recently because I wouldn't give him any money. He was later arrested and then released with a summons to appear in court, which, of course, he never did. I think everyone is fed up with the City Council failing to do their job to uphold our laws and protect our citizens from what is happening. Why did City Council ignore a petition signed by more than 8,000 people demanding you address this issue? Why are people being released from jail when they commit crimes against our citizens? If you're trying to protect them from COVID, that's laughable, considering the drugs they voluntarily put in their bodies. This soft approach the City Council has taken must end. These are addicts who don't want recovery. If they did, they could go to any 12-step meeting for free. You can't change someone who doesn't want to change. That's enabling, and enabling doesn't work. These people enjoy how they're living, and they don't want your help. They sustain themselves by committing crimes, and we law-abiding citizens of Boulder are the ones paying the price. People are moving away from Boulder. They aren't establishing new businesses here, and they aren't shopping here. They are fed up. We are traumatized daily by the crime and pollution these transient drug addicts are allowed to inflict upon our beautiful city, day after day after day. A good start would be to make panhandling illegal and to discontinue the free needle exchange. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Sherry. And finally, we have Claudia Team.
Good evening, Council members. This is Claudia Hanson Team. I live in North Boulder. I'm somewhat overwhelmed to be speaking tonight as we grapple with both gun violence and police accountability on a national stage, but like many others here, I'm here to speak about CU South tonight. So onwards. In the last two weeks, I've had the opportunity to attend multiple briefings and board meetings on the CU South Annexation talks, and I want to say thank you to everyone, both Council and staff, who has been part of that listening effort. I live about as far away from CU South as you can get in the city, so I'm not affected by ongoing flood risks or any spillover impacts of potential development on the site. But I think it's important for the city as a whole to bring this process to a close. We need flood mitigation in the South Boulder Creek watershed, and years of meticulous process have shown annexation to be the most viable path. Meanwhile, other issues and at-risk neighborhoods need attention. I'm encouraged by the process I've seen in fleshing out the annexation guiding principles, and I see real concessions to neighbors' concerns. Some, like the height ceiling at the roof level of a low-rise subdivision, are things I'd normally argue against as an urbanist and housing advocate, but here it's a way of getting the job done. Generous buffers on the west side reduce the potential for needed housing, but they are also a sign that neighbors are being heard. And on the subject of traffic impacts, I'm downright excited by a vehicle trip cap, which would position a future CU South campus to lead the city on transportation alternatives. There are, of course, more issues than can be packed into a two-minute comment or even the two-hour discussion you have planned, but on the issue of neighborhood impacts, where so many projects founder in Boulder, annexation negotiations are finding creative compromises on seemingly intractable issues. I hope you'll affirm that progress tonight and support the process continuing on schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. And with that, we will bring open comment to a close and turn to staff. Chris, Tom, do you have any responses?
Nothing for me tonight.
Nor for me. Thank you, Sam.
Very good. And Council, anyone have a response you want for what we heard tonight? Aaron?
Well, I just, I think we'll address a number of the speakers' concerns when we talk about the CU South issues later on this evening.
I think so as well. Anyone else? Rachel?
Just to add real quickly, I think a person named Brendan, law school student, spoke about engagement and continuing having virtual engagement as an option, and how much less stressful it is, which I appreciate it, as someone who testified to Council often. So just wanted to let him know that there is a subcommittee meeting on engagement tomorrow where we will be discussing that exact topic, and that is open to the public for anyone who would like to observe. And then I think we will be bringing recommendations to Council on May 11th. Bob's vaguely, yeah, got a strong nod from Bob, so May 11th would be good to tune in for that one. Thanks.
Thank you, Rachel. Anyone else? Very good. With that, Alicia, back to you.
All right, sir. Next on our agenda, we have the consent agenda, which is items A through G.
Very good. Thanks for that. And I think we have a specific item tonight about prevention of gun violence resolution, and so I'll turn to Rachel and Aaron to talk to us about that.
I'll take a stab at it. Aaron? I think Aaron is going to read the resolution, but probably we want to talk through it a little bit first because we got a hotline post today and also wanted to invite any feedback or comments from our colleagues on it. But shortly after the mass shooting on March 22nd, Aaron and I were asked to co-draft a resolution around gun violence prevention, as well as the appeal of the court's decision on assault weapons ban. So Carl Castillo kindly helped us to draft the resolution that is in front of Council tonight. And we did run the resolution by Giffords, which is a national gun violence prevention organization, to get their suggested edits, and we incorporated, I believe, all of them that they advised. And we were also advised, maybe it was the Subcommittee on Legislative Action Policy that was advised on this, but in drafting the resolution, we were advised or encouraged to focus on gun violence prevention measures that would have made a difference in our mass shootings. So to propose additions to our policy agenda and emphasize things that would have potentially stopped our tragedy. So I think with that, I'll turn it over to Aaron.
Yeah, that's a good summary, Rachel. And I'll just mention, we have already been in conversations with multiple of our legislators on this topic as well. I know Sam has spoken to them, and Rachel and I have been in meetings. We spoke with Governor Polis yesterday and impressed upon him our community's desire for significant new legislation, including an assault weapons ban, and communicated that message, and he indicated he was very interested, appreciative of our feedback, and was looking forward to getting the text of the resolution that hopefully will be passing tonight. So, you know, after the incredible tragedy that our community experienced last month, we feel like it's very important for us to step forward and really take up advocacy as much as we can for legislation at the state and federal level that would have some chance of preventing similar tragedies like this from happening in other cities across the country. So that's why we're bringing it forward.
And, and, yeah, I was just going to add that I'm hoping that we will share our final resolution with all of our legislators, all statewide elected officials, as well as share it pretty widely with at least regional, other city councils and county commissions in an effort to encourage some collaboration, which was, I think, one of the points that Mary made, Mary and Ginny made in a hotline post today. So with that, I don't know if we need to just open it up to general feedback and then talk about the hotline suggestions?
Um, yeah, I, I think that would be best. That's my opinion. If we wanted to read it once we're done with the editing. So, Aaron, if you wouldn't mind trying to track the edits and what we, what we say, then when you read it at the end, we'll have those incorporated, perhaps. So, Mary, we have the resolution in front of us, and you and Ginny sent out a hotline. Would you like to speak to that and see what, what Council's will is on that?
Sure. I'll defer to Ginny on the first couple items. Since they were mostly, came from her. My addition was focusing on the, on the addition, the section four addition. However, we did collaborate on the language for the others. So I'll let Ginny kick this off.
All right. Thank you, Mary. I'm looking at several screens here. I thought it was a well-written resolution, but I thought maybe a few things that I thought we could add, or at least to make it more solid, was, I believe it was D on March 22nd, 2021, an assault weapon. An assault weapon was used to murder 10 people in a mass shooting at the Table Mesa King Supers. Well, I thought this was passive language, and I thought it could be more active, because at the end of the day, guns are inanimate objects, and a person used the gun. And so I thought maybe it would be best to have a language that expressed that, because I just thought just saying that, you know, a weapon was used, it was too impersonal. And I believe the change I was considering was on March 22nd, 2021, a gunman with an assault weapon murdered 10 people in a mass shooting at the Table Mesa King Supers. There is, I just feel like this, that's the language. That's the language, because it was a person at the end of the day who, who did that terrible act. And we want to keep weapons away, assault weapons away from people who have, who are ill-intent. So that was my thought on that. And also for, give me a second, for the next one, which was number D, finding D. We are called upon to prevent such suffering from reoccurring. I thought that language at the end, it was almost like too tall of an order. And it felt slightly imprecise as well. And I thought maybe we could use language that says, for instance, the Boulder community call upon the City Council, the state legislature, and the federal government to seek effective legislation to reduce gun violence and mass shootings in our community. And I felt that that language actually follow up to the next section, as opposed to just saying that we are called to end suffering. I just think that language is too strong, and I'm an idealistic person as well. I just thought we could be more centered in what we're asking and who we are. Number three, change the first sentence to of the section. Now, I think for me, it's just the language that we use. And we strongly urge the city's state and federal delegation to advocate for legislation that will preempt future mass shootings. And I know it's like parsing language, but I think language matters, especially in resolutions. And I was thinking, well, we do talk about gun prevention in this country, but preemption, I felt, was much, a much stronger language. It's almost like stopping it, not giving it, not giving it the time to even grow, if you really think about it. And I thought the national expansion of red flag laws and federal support of mental health program, programs or programming should be part of the list. I know in our hotline, the way we sent it, it seems like it's, it reorders the language, but that was not the intent at all, actually. It was, the intent was to ensure that we mentioned red flag laws, because I believe that's also part of the president's proposals back last week. And federal support of mental health programming, I think it's a no-brainer, because at the end of the day, we want gun reform, but I think there's also that mental health piece that is very, very important part of it. Also, number four, again, that was just for clarity purposes, because we mentioned City Council, we mentioned CD, which one? So I just thought, is it the city's position, or is it the city council's position? So that's up to, to us to decide. But I just thought it would, it's, it's important to be clear on which of these two entities, is it coming from City Council or the city staff? And number five, I think it's Mary's idea, and I think she'd probably be better at explaining it.
Mary?
Thanks, Ginny. And first of all, I just want to support the changes that Ginny mentioned. I know that the language in the hotline is slightly different from what she just stated, and I would totally support what she stated. And item number three, I do think that the additions present a more holistic approach to the mass shootings, and I think it's important to approach problems in holistic manners. So I support that. And then the changing the city's position to the city council's position, the legislative agenda is a council document that can actually change from council to council. So it's not the city's position, it is the council's position that is then supported by the city staff. So that's my comments on those items. And then the intent, and I'm totally open to changes in the language. The intent of number four is to create some sort of a national collective collaborative of cities that have been affected by violence, either through mass shootings or in the daily shootings of, of people in, in, in street shootings or in, or by suicide. So I had a list in there initially, but I, I think that just calling on cities who are inspired, and perhaps that's another place that we would want to send the resolution, and, and to encourage other cities to write their own resolutions and send them off to the president's office. So that's the intent of number four, and the language is definitely totally up to us.
Very good. Well, thank you, Ginny and Mary for that. I'll just say one quick thing. I I'll just say one quick thing, I support all those changes. My comment on number one is I like what was written where it says, "A lone individual with an assault weapon murdered 10 people." I like that a little bit better than gunman. And then I will just say on the last one, I'd like to suggest a friendly amendment to one word. The new section four would say something and then say, "They are backed by collective intelligence and service of collaborative initiatives." I'd like to change intelligence, suggest that we change intelligence to actions. So it's "are backed by collective actions in service of collaborative initiatives." So I would make that suggestion. Personally, I think these are all positive changes. So thank you for bringing them, and thank you, Rachel and Erin, for bringing the resolution forward with Carl's help. Anyone else have thoughts? Erin?
Yeah, well, Mary, I appreciate the input. I did have a couple kind of responses to them in terms of the specific language changes that maybe I'll just share with you here. That, I thought that, that first, sorry about the dog in the background, that first change, I thought worked well. Sam, I'm gonna go with either individual or gunman over lone individual, because I feel like the word lone sort of promotes the idea of misguided lone individuals who do terrible things rather than kind of the systemic culture of gun violence in our society. So I would, I would stay away from the word lone.
That's fine. I think individual to me, at least, and gunman maybe too, implies the leverage that an assault weapon gives to a particular person. So I'm fine with either individual or gunman.
Great. And then for the second one, the one thing was that the very first sentence of the next section talks about how we are calling upon our state and federal delegations to make changes. So it feels like the language is somewhat redundant. So I wonder if we could preserve, like Ginny, your point about like that we are called upon is too vague, to sort of change that to something like, you know, our, you know, it's our responsibility as the city council to put forward measures to reduce gun violence and to grant such suffering from reoccurring. So some different language, but then, you know, not have the whole "we call upon" thing, because that's really the next sentence of the resolution.
Could I, could I offer some language on that one?
Please.
In, let me go back to that screen. To, to your point of of the redundancy to, instead of "we call upon the state of Colorado and federal governments" to strike that, and to instead say, "Our primary responsibility as elected officials in the city of Boulder is public safety. Therefore, we seek effective bipartisan legislation onward." Something like that.
And Rachel, what's your thought? I mean, I kind of like the, we're sort of going into a lot of wordsmithing here, but the preventing such suffering from reoccurring, I thought was good language. I'm concerned about the bipartisan word. I think we want effective legislation, you know, and who votes for it? Whether it's all Republicans, all Democrats, or some mix is not the critical thing.
Yeah, I am, I don't have very strong attachment. I do think that for this one, you know, we were, we were sort of in the the why part of, you know, like the background, the findings of why. So that's why we were saying, you know, we're moved to do this because of these things. And then, you know, the how is sort of in the next section. So this seems like it's, it's a little bit muddling those two. I would strongly object to bipartisan, not because I object to that end, but because we have no control over whether legislation is bipartisan. And so by focusing on that, we may, you know, maybe ushering this into a dustbin somewhere, because we have no ability to control how, who's going to sign on to effective legislation. So I think our goal should be to focus on what it is we're asking for. And then I think we lay that out in the next one. So that's what I would say on that one, you know, I'm not, I don't have any pride in authorship on this, but want to make sure that we're kind of separating out what goes in, you know, the background section and then the action section. So however you want to do that, and again, I wouldn't, for this one, use bipartisan. I do have a couple more thoughts, but I can share them until you nail down this language.
All right, so Mark, I see your hand. Is it on this sentence?
Well, it's on the general process. I cannot imagine any version of this that is not approvable and will not be approved. And rather than wordsmith it this way, would it make some sense for either Erin or Rachel to wordsmith it with either Ginny or Mary and come up with mutually agreeable language? Because it's, I'm just not sure as a productive process to be doing it this way. And I cannot imagine that we would not come up with something that is mutually agreeable to everyone. And as I said, this is, this is going to be the easiest approval I have encountered in a year and a half on council. And I would just ask the parties to get comfortable with each other's language and bring it to us and let us read it. But I, there's almost no circumstance under which I would not support it wholeheartedly.
My only concern there, Mark, is like, there's only about a month left in this state legislative sort of season. And so the longer we hold off issuing this, the less likely we are to have any impact imminently.
Okay.
I mean, I agree, wordsmithing doesn't seem like the most productive use of our time.
I agree with that.
Well, I also agree, wordsmithing is not the most productive use of our time. But one of the points of doing it now was what Rachel said. Another point of doing it now is we have a deadline on filing any appeal that we're going to do for the assault weapons ban question. So I think, Mark, at the very least, what I would hope we do tonight, even if we don't adopt a resolution, I would like to, I'd like to let Erin and Rachel make their kind of editorial calls and adopt it. That's my position. But if we don't want to, I think the most important thing that has a time sensitivity is that we check in with Tom about the appeal. So. So I'll turn to Rachel and Erin. How would you like to close out the wordsmithing part? I'm perfectly willing to defer to your judgment on this.
Well, it seems like, I don't know how much more we'll have to go through tonight to just, it seems like it would be more optimal to adopt a resolution tonight and get through it. So that would actually be my vote, is to spend another five minutes if we need it and get to the unanimous resolution. Support hopefully.
Does anyone disagree with that? Right, seeing no disagreement, then Ginny, do you have any? I see lots of hands still up. So, Mark, you said your bit. Ginny, is your hand still up?
Yeah, well, I was just gonna make a comment that the process-wise, I don't know if we could go back and work as a foursome or threesome anyway. So yeah, figuring this out right here, right now, is probably the best resolution.
Yeah.
The only other two things I was gonna share, Sam, is number one, the language as presented was vetted by Gifford. So I think the less we veer away from what we had approval from by an agency that was looking at it to make sure that it, it kind of complied with the goals that we were setting forth, as well as didn't like create any legal issues. Like there was one version where they were like, well, you don't want to say that, because that like, you know, could create a ripple effect of X, Y, and Z. So I think the closer we stay with, to their vetted language, the best. And then the other is like, in terms of the red flag law and mental health, I think we all do support that, but it wasn't relevant to our shooting situation. And so there were a lot of other things that we talked about that stripped away from including, because they didn't directly impact this. And so if we're gonna open up to other things that we prioritize that aren't even, I think, currently in our legislative action guide, I think that's a much longer conversation. So I wonder if that could maybe be just something that we say, the subcommittee should consider, the legislative action subcommittee, look at whether we want to add back in red flag. I think we maybe took it out after it was passed at the state level. Again, because we already have that one in place, would not have impacted our situation. And then mental health is, you know, it impacts so many things in our city, not just gun violence and in our world, that putting it just in here, I think, is a, maybe a meatier discussion for the subcommittee. So my thoughts would be, you know, a couple of the changes, I think, that are just stylistic are probably fine. But anything meaty, we should probably go back to subcommittee for further consideration.
I was gonna make a process of suggestion, maybe along what Mark offered. Why don't we pass the resolution tonight as originally drafted? That gives Tom the instruction he needs, that gives us a position with respect to state legislation. And then we designate one among Rachel and Erin and one among Ginny and Mary, to the two designees, to go back and work on potential amendments. So we pass something tonight. And if those two people determine that it's important for us to amend some of our language, we can bring it back in two weeks and do an amendment, but that doesn't hold us up on legislative activism. That doesn't hold up Tom's work.
I think that's good. What do you think, Ginny, Rachel, Erin, Mary? Got a thumbs up from Mary, thumbs up from Ginny. All right, I think we'll go ahead with that then. That's a good suggestion. Erin, would you like to read the current state of the resolution and we can move forward?
Sure. I mean, since Mary and Ginny both said that was okay, I do, I appreciate your feedback. I think we got, I was starting to mock up a revised document with these changes. And so I think, I think we can incorporate some of them in a way that'll make the resolution even better. So why don't we go ahead and, I'm relieved not having to read and edit it on the fly version. So we'll read the original one and we'll collaborate and we'll come up with some amendments and then pass those next time, if that's all right with everybody.
Yep. Good suggestion, Bob.
Okay. So Resolution number 1288, a resolution urging passage of state and federal legislation to prevent gun violence. Findings: The city council of the city of Boulder, Colorado hereby finds that, A) In May of 2018, the Boulder City Council adopted an ordinance banning the sale and possession of assault weapons, large-capacity magazines, and multi-burst trigger activators within the city limits, Boulder's assault weapons ban. It also raised the age for legal firearm purchase and possession from 18 to 21 years of age. B) In the years since, the city has also advocated for a range of state or federal gun violence prevention legislation that could extend, that would extend the impact of the city's ordinance. C) On March 12th, 2021, a state district court declared that Colorado state law preempted Boulder's assault weapons ban and consequently enjoined the city from enforcing it. D) On March 22nd, 2021, an assault weapon was used to murder 10 people in a mass shooting at the table Mesa King Supers. E) The weapon used in the shooting was considered legal to purchase, possess, and use in Colorado, but had up until 10 days earlier been prohibited from being purchased, possessed, or used in Boulder. F) The mass shooting in Boulder was one, but was, but one of hundreds that have plagued our state and nation over recent years. Sorry. Each has inflicted profound pain on the surviving victims, the families and loved ones of those who did not survive, as well as their entire communities. We are called upon to prevent such suffering from reoccurring. Resolution: The city council of the city of Boulder resolves as follows. Section 1: We strongly urge the city's state and federal delegation to continue their efforts to pass legislation that could prevent mass shootings. This includes first and foremost, a ban on assault weapons. It also includes regulation of short-barreled firearms equipped with pistol braces, a waiting period for firearm purchases of at least six days, the addition of a 10-year firearm prohibition for individuals with conviction of or outstanding warrants for violent misdemeanors or crimes that are linked to an increased risk of gun violence, a repeal of the state preemption on local regulation of firearms, universal background checks on all sales of firearms, requirements for a firearm owner to keep his or her firearm in a locked container or secured with a locking device, a requirement for firearms owners to report an unaccounted-for firearm, and an increase in the minimum age to purchase and possess firearms. Section 2: The city's position on gun violence prevention contained within the city's 2021 policy statement on regional, state, and federal policy issues shall be amended as described in Section 1, and this position elevated to the top of the state and federal priority list. Section 3: Council supports an appeal of the district court decision that enjoined the city from enforcing its restrictions on assault weapons. That's it, thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that, Erin. And thank you to everyone who took part in pulling this together. This is part of our consent agenda. Are there any, Bob, is your hand still up or is that leftover?
Just up and up to move the consent agenda.
Great, awesome. Is there a second?
Again.
Alicia, is this a roll call or a show of hands?
It's a roll call, sir.
Very good.
Sam? Is there any discussion that we can have with respect to Appendix J? Which is part of the consent agenda.
What would you like to say about it, Mark?
Well, I am comfortable with the basic premise of extending the area of Appendix J to include ball aerospace, and certainly the extension of time, I think, is quite appropriate. But I do want to point out that a planning board voted against, at this time, inclusion of Diagonal Plaza. And I thought that might merit a little conversation. We tend to be very supportive of Planning Board and its decisions, until we're not. And then this appears to be one of those times. And I'm wondering if people have actually looked at the the resolutions passed by Planning Board and given any thought as to their significance.
Yeah, I did, Mark, and thanks for raising that. We should probably have a discussion, quick discussion about this issue. I was a little puzzled by the planning board's vote, which was four to three. I didn't go back to watch their video, so I don't know the reasons that those who did not want to extend Appendix J to Diagonal Plaza. The thing I would say about Diagonal Plaza is it is probably our most problematic part of town, and it's public information that there is a concept plan that has been filed with respect to a large segment of Diagonal Plaza that will provide market rate and low-income affordable housing onsite in a number of units. And so I think we want to encourage that type. I don't know what the concept plan will turn out to. I don't know if they'll file a site plan, but I think we don't want to discourage that type of redevelopment of our probably most blighted portion of town, nor do we want to discourage onsite affordable housing. So I think including Diagonal Plaza as part of Exhibit J would further that effort.
I had thoughts from Planning Board that they were concerned that there needed to be more planning and more discussion of how to provide not simply housing, but diversity of housing and housing types. And that this was an opportunity to actually do the planning before conferring the benefit. And I suspect that at the end of the day, it's going to be a very appropriate spot for additional height considerations. But I think, as I understood what they were doing, they were saying, yeah, but not yet. And I'm not sure there's a particular time urgency in making that inclusion now.
Might he make a suggestion that we have Jacob Lindsay speak to us about his view, our director of planning, about what Planning Board said? Jacob?
Well, good evening, may we, your members of council. I'll also bring into the discussion the voice of Charles Pharaoh as well for feedback on this. As we discussed previously, Mark, and as well as members of council, the vote by the Planning Board was not a unanimous. the vote by the planning board was not a unanimous vote. There was quite a bit of discussion around the extension of appendix J. And in regards to the specific project that's proposed at diagonal plaza, the proposal that is currently on the boards does not include a request for height above three stories. It does not include an a request for height modification. Planning board since was at their vote, was that further study could be helpful at diagonal plaza? But they did not specifically address the issue as related to the current proposal, simply because that proposal does not request a fourth or fifth story. So I I hope that that's helpful in terms of clarifying the discussion. I would also go to Charles Pharaoh if you'd like to add anything additional to the discussion.
No, Jacob, I think that's an accurate summary of the board's conversation.
Very good. So let me just ask a clarifying question, if you don't mind. If we were not to include diagonal plaza in appendix J at this time, would it, to the best of your knowledge, slow down the process for the concept plan?
Well, thanks, Sam. To the best of my knowledge, no, it would not, because again, they're not requesting additional height. I'll also add that the inclusion of the diagonal plaza site in appendix J going back to twenty fifteen, in fact, predating my time here in Boulder, was done to enable the redevelopment of that site, along with sites like Ball Aerospace, the downtown city center around Pearl Street. These were areas where council and staff anticipated future redevelopment taking place. So that height potential at diagonal plaza was granted to enable a larger scale redevelopment. The current proposal at diagonal plaza is only one parcel. It is not the entirety of the site. And it in fact leaves intact most of the retail in that location. So the appendix J designation of diagonal plaza is something that was done years ago to enable a larger scale redevelopment. The current proposal only anticipates three stories. So I do not believe that it would impede the current proposal that's there. It could move forward presently.
And if I could ask one more clarifying question, I think I know the answer to, but I want to double check for all of us. If we include diagonal plaza in appendix J, that only means that a development is allowed to apply for a height exemption, but it would still have to comply with all the other requirements of that height exemption, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And then I see, I don't know which views first, let me get it up. Aaron and then Rachel. Aaron?
Yeah, I was just gonna make that point, Sam, that there's no harm in adding it back in because we have total discretion on whether to accept an application for a height modification. The planning board could still turn them down and we could turn them down on appeal if we decided it was necessary. So I would I would go ahead and take staff's recommendation and the at least the vote of three of the four planning board members and go ahead and include that.
Thank you. Rachel and then Bob. Rachel?
I appreciate Mark bringing this up because it was a good idea to talk about it. So thank you. I guess I'm a little confused. I my recollection is our last discussion of appendix J was that it was it was sort of due to expire in like August or we were gonna let it sunset in in the coming few months. So it it seems like if it's if that was, if I'm remembering correctly, that that's the will of of council that it's likely to to drop out, then I wouldn't, I don't know that we want to hold someone to those standards for just the next few months, I guess, and and limit in that way. So I I might seek clarification from Jacob or anyone who can clarify if that's if that's even accurate.
Well, that's correct, Rachel. This is gonna come back to council for a vote and you all will have the choice to decide whether or not appendix J stands or whether it should dissolve. So that will be back on the plate in front of council. So you're correct.
In just in a couple of months, right? Like it's not third quarter or some second, third quarter.
That's correct. Again, I would go to Charles, but I believe this comes back to you in August, if my recollection serves correctly. And Charles may have, he may have a better memory than.
Yeah, that's correct. We're hoping to bring forward community benefit phase two for the board's consideration in August. So that would be the idea is that the appendix J, the council could consider whether or not to sunset that or hurry up it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Bob?
I'm gonna do something very dangerous and I'm gonna disagree slightly with Jacob Lindsay. I have looked at the concept plan and I think there is an alternative that does would require a height variation. I think there's a couple of options that are presented in the concept plan and I think one of them does does contemplate that. So I agree with Aaron that let's let this go through its normal process and and go to concept and and council can call it up if it like, and then same with site review. I I just wouldn't want to tie the, we've been waiting for years and years and years, literally decades, for someone to come along and redevelop diagonal plaza. And I hate to 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 quash this as a moment of opportunity. Again, council may not like it, planning board may not like it, but I wouldn't want to foreclose our options here, including the option that is in the concept plan for a potential height variation.
Very good. Aaron, I see your hand still up. Is it leftover? Okay, very good. So, Mark, we've had the discussion. We have a motion and a second on the, sorry, the consent agenda. So why don't we go ahead and vote? Anyone who doesn't want to support any of the items on consent can vote yes on the consent agenda, but no on any particular item they'd like. So if we've had enough discussion, Alicia, I'd turn back to you for the roll call.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Weaver?
I.
Weaver?
I.
Councilmember Rocket?
I.
Friend?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Nagel?
I, but no on F.
Swetlik?
Yes.
Wallack?
I, but no on F.
Yates?
Yes.
And Young?
Yes.
The consent agenda is passed, sir, with the nays noted on item F.
Very good. Thank you very much. And with that, you can take us on to the next item, please.
All right, sir. Next on our agenda, we have item number six, A. Matters from the city manager, the CU South Discussion of Key Issues.
Great. And for this item, I'm first gonna turn to our senior planner from Planning and Development Services, Phil Kleisler, who will begin the presentation.
Yes, I'm gonna share my screen. Good evening, council. It's a pleasure to be here today. And let's see. And one moment. Brenda, are you able to see the actual slide?
Yes, we are, Phil.
Thanks. So, good evening, council. Phil Kleisler, Planning and Development Services. On behalf of the project team for the CU South project, South Boulder Creek project, we appreciate the opportunity to be before, to visit with you tonight and have this discussion. This is an update and an opportunity for council to provide input on the direction and focus of the CU South annexation. Before getting into the proposed agenda, we'd like to, we thought it'd be helpful just to have a quick note around the anticipated structure of the annexation agreement. What we would anticipate, this would be an agreement negotiated by staff and presented for approval or denial to city council later this year. We would anticipate the agreement being structured in kind of several different categories, one of which would be general terms, and these would be terms that apply to the entire site, such as wetland standards, administrative processes. And then there would be other terms specific to geographical areas of the site. And so and and those geographical areas would be likely pretty similar or identical to the land use designations found in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan shown here. And so we wanted to mention that just because we'd like to structure tonight's discussion in a way that's similar as we're working, like we're working through the annexation agreement. And so to use the next two hours, what staff proposes is a very brief introduction by myself. And then we're going to hit each of these topics in order. And so.
I I apologize to interrupt your slides. What you're showing is just the not the slideshow mode, so it might be sharing the wrong screen.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, there's no screen option, so I'm just gonna do this for now. Is that okay?
Sure, yeah.
So we would anticipate that. And so what we would do is to have a brief presentation and then we'll pause for Q and A and council input and then move on to the next topic once we're finished. And we'll work behind the scenes to try to figure out the presenting function once we're finished with introductory part of this. We also have staff from several city departments, as well as representatives from CU Boulder, including Derek Silva, Assistant Vice Chancellor for Business Strategy, Abby Benson, Associate Vice Chancellor for Strategic Relations and Support, Rochelle Riley, Acting Interim Campus Architect, and Bill Fox, Principal at Fox Tuttle Transportation, the university's consultant. So a few notes about where we are in the process. Overall, there are two very much interrelated projects happening concurrently, the annexation and the South Boulder Creek Flood Mitigation Project. We anticipate having a vote on the annexation later this year. And depending on that action, this team of city staff and consultants would proceed with the design permitting and ultimately construction of a flood mitigation project, which uses a portion of CU South by twenty twenty six. This is our anticipated review review process for the annexation. We last visited with council back in twenty twenty in November. And it's been a busy few months since then. We're very grateful for the community members who have visited with us through neighborhood meetings, group meetings, drop in sessions and the over nine hundred people who have participated in an online questionnaire. That feedback is included, is summarized as attachment B to your packet this evening. And we were also listening along the way. And as we were hearing things, brought other items to the table as a result of that community input that we look forward to discussing this evening. We've had several public meetings over the last week and a half or so leading into this meeting, including a transportation advisory board meeting last Monday and a planning board meeting on Thursday. Open space board also took some kind of minor action that we'll get into later on Wednesday. Moving ahead, we will expect to have a process committee meeting in May and we'll also be actually visiting with the planning board on May twentieth as well. So there are, there's a lot of history with this project. And what I would, you know, kind of in the more near past, in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, the university, the city and the county, Boulder County partnered to facilitate a public process that ultimately resulted in the CU South Guiding Principles. And those principles included high level vision vision statements for what we would expect to happen on CU South. In early twenty or in early twenty nineteen, the university submitted an application for annexation and that application was largely structured around those guiding principles. And so there's been a lot of back and forth between the staff at both parties. And our goal in this has been to translate the guiding principles into enforceable annexation terms. Last October, we received some new information and published what we called a briefing book that is basically a snapshot in time about where we are in the process. And we recently refreshed that briefing book and that's included as attachment A to your memo this evening. After tonight's meeting and leading into the following months, we will be kind of picking up the pen and the the attorneys and the staff from both the city and the university will be drafting the annexation agreement moving ahead. There are several new things in the briefing book. There's a key issues map we'll get into this evening. We heard from planning board and council an interest in additional information around financial impacts. And so we added some more information there. The university did submit design guidelines recently. We have a recommendation from the Open Space Board of Trustees, additional information around transportation, as well as some of those emerging issues that came out of the public process. So there are several, this is the first topic. And so we'll just have a few slides as an introduction. And just as a reminder, we'll let CU Boulder is also asked to just say a few words to council relating to this item as well. And so back in twenty seventeen during those guiding principles, we, there were several written relating to transportation. And they were written really to state the city's expectations for mitigating transportation impacts. And given the long term nature of the project and really the unknowns around specific development plans, we felt that performance based standards were a reasonable approach for ensuring that the future transportation needs of the site do not unduly impact the city's transportation network. And some of those examples are shown here that we'll get into in just a bit. We also identified the site as a potential opportunity to construct a multimodal hub to help manage the employee and resident access and mobility. We wanted to ensure that when that a safe multimodal system is designed on the on the site, it's done so in the context of the overall city transportation network and also keeping an eye on impacts to adjacent open space. And lastly, discouraging or preventing a bypass between from the north part of the site around Table Mesa down to the south part of the site towards Colorado ninety three. A transportation study was submitted by the university in January of this year and staff responded to that study several weeks later. The the university's consultant is here for any technical questions that council may have. But the study in in a nutshell did include a land use scenario that that included eleven hundred residential units and that's consistent with our guiding principles. It also did include five hundred thousand square feet of academic facilities. It recommended two primary points of access. One would be the existing access to the site, which is South Loop Drive. The other would be on the south portion of the site, Colorado ninety three, with limited and secondary access to Tantra Drive. It also provided some additional information around a multimodal hub. And again, it will, staff has shared those comments and we've also been sharing comments that we've received and council has also received from community members. And we expect, our expectation is that the revised study will be responsive to all of those comments. The concerns around the neighborhood are really around some of the methodology used in the study, as well as some of the impacts associated with potential increases in traffic, particularly in the Martin Acres area, South Creek Seven, Moorhead, those areas of the site, generally within the vicinity of CU South. Lastly, the briefing book includes some high level information about where we are seeking to go with the transportation program on the site. And so really, in addition to ensuring that those transportation impacts don't unduly impact the city's transportation networks, we also wanted to determine ways to ensure that advanced phases of development are contingent upon meeting those performance based standards. So the next phase would be responsible, for example, for meeting a trip cap program. The trip cap program in practice would limit vehicle trips to and from the site at those specific access points. And so it would be a specific number that would be permitted through those. There would there would need to be some annual monitoring and reporting to the city that would be established, as well as a compliance process for what happens if those trips are exceeded. The university is, we're also looking at transportation demand management strategies. And I believe CU wants to mention some of those in just a moment. We have got an agreement that the university will construct a multimodal hub on the site and some of the basic requirements for what we'd be looking for from the city's transportation master plan are included in the briefing book. And additionally, we will be looking and having a discussion around necessary offsite and onsite improvements once the study is finalized. As I mentioned, I'm gonna stop sharing the screen. The Transportation Advisory Board and Planning Board met last week. Both had a fair number of questions for the university and its consultant. I think overall, the tabs discussion, Transportation Advisory Board, it really focused on ensuring innovative approaches to mobility. That includes some flexibility for future conditions, given the long term nature of the project. So kind of testing things out and making adjustments down the road. Tab also suggested more creative thinking around Moorhead Avenue, like changing it to local only with bus, bike, pedestrian and micro mobility improvements. And the planning board seemed to agree particularly with emphasizing bike access and slower traffic. The planning board also suggested de-emphasizing car traffic to Tantra Drive and including language in the agreement that anticipates that down the line, conditions may change and further studies would maybe be required prior to any development actually taking place. So that's my my introductory presentation and transportation. What we'd like to do is pause. Derek Silva from the university asked to address council if that's okay with the with council. And we appreciate your time. And once we get through this topic, we'll go to the next. And we appreciate your time and once we get through this topic, we'll go to the next.
Great. Thank you, Phil. And my opinion is we'd like to hear from Derek specifically about. Traffic right now and transportation. Any objection from council? Great. See none. Let's have Derek talk to us.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I wanted to just address a couple of points about the traffic study. There certainly has been a lot of public dialogue about it. But just a few clarification points. One is that the current study is a draft study. So we anticipate taking the public input, council input, tab input. And considering all of that whenever we go to revise our final study. So the, the current study out there is in draft form. It's not final form and part of. What will lead us to that final study is exactly this, getting feedback from you all and getting feedback from the public, which we have and from tab. And then just to let you all know as well is that we did, we didn't create the scope and assumptions and all of that in a vacuum. We actually worked with city staff to develop those for that traffic study. So before the study was ever run, we. We met and collaborated with city staff, transportation staff to get those key assumptions in that study. And then just a couple of other things. CU Boulder has very expensive TDM programs. That includes, includes bus passes for all students, the campus pass, the Ego Pass, van pool, car share programs, bike share programs. Vehicle charging stations, so both fleet and public charging stations. Our single occupancy vehicle rate is 50%. So there's a lot of TDM activities that we currently engage in to help reduce the impact of, of the campus. And the traffic that it generates. And then I would just like to point out as well that there are many instances where we've also collaborated with the city of Boulder on different transportation-related projects. These include the 30th and Colorado Underpass, which is now underway. The College Underpass, Baseline Underpass, Uklit Underpasses. We've also partnered as a stakeholder on different transportation studies, including the Rappo Corridor Study. The Highway 119 First and Final Mile Study and the 30th and Colorado Corridor Studies. And we're currently partnering with the city to evaluate micro mobility options, specifically scooters in the city. So thank you. That's what I wanted to add.
Great. Thank you, Derek. And I'll turn to council first for questions. Does council have any questions for either Phil or Derek? Or I believe, Phil, you said that we had a representative from Fox Tuttle here, correct? So can we ask questions of them?
I believe so, right, Derek?
Yes.
Okay, super. I see Mark and then Aaron. Mark?
Yeah, Phil, the, the, I'm a little confused about the trip cap concept. How exactly does it work? I mean, does a gate come down when you start to exceed the approved number of trips? I mean, I think it's a great concept. I just want to understand a little better about how it works.
We, I don't think we've done it here in Boulder. It's, I think it's fairly popular in some of the areas in California. Like we've had some. We've talked with people who've done a similar program like for Facebook and some of the other areas, companies there. And so what would happen, there would need to be a monitoring period set up. And that monitoring period would do a traffic count. And if it's above that specific threshold, what we, what our thoughts are initially is that. There would be a cure period where the university would need to retool its transportation programs. In an effort to reduce those number of trips. And those later phases of development would generally be contingent upon getting that number back down. Other areas, for example, those private businesses, there's been actual monetary fee that's come into play. But from the city's perspective, it's been preferable to really focus on enhancing the multimodal aspects. Of the site rather than just assessing a fee and living with the traffic.
Okay. Thank you. I, I think it's a great concept. So I applaud it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Aaron?
Yeah, I agree with that. I think the, the trip cap is a great idea. And we've talked for years about TDM with teeth. And this is a great example of that about transportation event management has actual consequences if it's not fulfilled. So that, that's great to see. And so Derek, I appreciated what you're saying about taking feedback into account in terms of doing a final traffic study. So maybe if you or Bill, thanks for being here, could just address, you know, people have talked about. When the trips were counted, what day it was, things like that. And just can you confirm that you're going to be looking at those issues and make sure we get those exactly right for the, the final version?
Yeah, absolutely. We can confirm that. Bill, I don't know if you want to say anything else about what will, what will occur between now and the final study. But, and as well as some of those, the concerns around the data.
Derek, good evening. Bill Fox with Fox Tuttle Transportation Group. Can you hear me okay?
Again, thank you.
Great. I just want to say that, you know, and just to reinforce that all the key assumptions of the study. Were done collaboratively with CU and City Boulder staff in early November before we started on the study. And we've been scrutinizing and potentially preparing to update all those key assumptions. Based on the input that we've heard, including trip generation rates, multimodal assumptions about how that will influence the trip generation rates. Trip distribution assumptions and where the traffic might come and go from in the surrounding networks. So all of those things have been scrutinized as part of this update process. And we've also heard a lot of concern about the use of traffic counting during COVID conditions. And this is the topic that we have to deal with on every study we do, any, any community for the last year, year, year or more. Unfortunately, we had to take some traffic counts in November. We had, our study area has nine intersections in it, existing intersections. We had pre-COVID. Signalized counts at six of those nine intersections and those six intersections account for over 90% of the approach movements in our study area. So the lion's share of our study is based on pre-COVID traffic counts. And that in and of itself is conservative because I don't think we'll ever go back to commuting the way we did before the influence of COVID. We figured out how to work from home as office employees, but we, we had to take some counts during COVID. We did that on the six on-ramps along Table Mesa onto, onto US 36 and Foothills Parkway. And we had to adjust those to pre-COVID levels and we made some comparisons based on historic counts. And I would love to go into more detail, but it's probably not for tonight. But we've brought those, those additional counts forward into pre-COVID estimates. And, and having to take counts during COVID was unavoidable, but it's not changing. Or significantly influencing the, the traffic projections in this, in this study. We also had another thing that was of concern was projecting the future growth of background traffic with even without CU South. And in that case, we were able to rely on some historic counts. The city has been counting traffic in all of these corridors in our study since 19, early 1980s. And so we've looked at that, those, the, the, the change in traffic over time to help us predict the future background growth without. Before CU comes into play. And we've been criticized a little bit for not, for being. For implying that traffic has been flattening out in many of these corridors, particularly Table Mesa and Broadway. And, but the fact of the matter is that traffic grew faster between 19, early 80s and the year 2000 and it's been flattening out since. So going forward, we're really looking at the current. Projections of traffic and that's based on all the hard work that City Boulder has been doing, the C has been doing with your TDM. Measures and then changing the culture of how we travel in Boulder. And, and so to think that we're going to go back to 1985 and travel the same way doesn't make sense when we're looking to the future. So that, that helps explain some of the concern about projecting future background traffic. But those are, and then the last thing that there was a significant concern is we did not project that a ton of traffic would use neighborhood streets like Moorhead. There are a couple of different alternatives to Moorhead, one being US 36, the other being Table Mesa to Broadway. Both of those routes are significantly faster, both physically measuring those and then relying on some of the Google Maps information that we have electronically. And so it's a significant time penalty to, to use Moorhead as your route between CU South and the main campus. So we don't think a lot of people want to do that. Certainly, in congested times, there may be the incentive, but you have to overcome. Between a one and a half to three-minute time deficit to even want to go on Moorhead. And we just don't think that will be the case. But, so anyway, with, with the input from TAB, with the input from Planning Board and. With the input from citizens, we'll do a much better job explaining all of our assumptions in our updated report. And we're going to be turning the crank again here shortly with the updated information. Any specific questions that I could answer on what we've done?
No, that, that was really helpful, Bill. Thank you. So that's, that's great to hear that you'll be taking that feedback into account, both in terms of. Updating the traffic study and maybe writing some analysis of, of why you did the numbers you did, which.
I thought I did, but I'm going to do a much better job.
Thanks so much. Just one more question, which is that, so it look, it seems like the residential units here will be a little different from. Our typical new residential units. Like if you, if you build an apartment complex at, you know, 30th and Pearl, there's a decent chance that. That a fair number of the people live there are, are, you know, moving in from out of town. But, but my point being that student housing, that's students who are living there who would. Already be going to CU and would be living somewhere else, but traveling into CU anyway. And so some number of those students would be coming in, say from, you know, Broomfield or along the US 36 corridor already, right? So that while some number of those trip, those trips that are coming from the site, some of them would be coming through that intersection anyway. If the students had had to live further away down that quarter. Are we taking that or making any guesses as to that? Trips that were removing from the roadway system by having this new housing in these traffic studies?
Well, we haven't specifically set out to do that, although that's certainly worth trying to do, put some numbers to that. We have tried to accommodate. The reduction in automobile traffic based on the, the parking management that CU has, the difficulty to find parking on the main campus. And so certainly we're trying to be, make a realistic effort. To project the impacts of, or, or the potential to not travel by automobile between. But as far as an intercept from the other trips that might have already been going farther into Boulder, it's something that we haven't specifically tried to. Account for in the first draft.
I understand that. It's maybe something worth considering, at least in the narrative of the traffic study. I don't know, Derek, I imagine you have pretty good numbers on. How many students live outside of the city of Boulder and maybe in what parts of the region? So, you know, maybe we don't do a hard and fast reduction in roadway trips because it's so hard to estimate, but it might be worth a couple of paragraphs in the study. To say how many, you know, some number of hundreds of trips daily may well be replacing trips they had gone through here anyway.
Sure.
So if I. Oh, you want to do that too, Sam?
I was going to colloquy as well, but go ahead, Rachel.
I think a really small one, but just, I, I also wonder, like, I live right near the area and often drive my son to Fairview High School. Which is sort of on the other side of Broadway. And I would imagine that some number of trips will also be eliminated if there's a much better. Bike path sort of that connects Fraser Meadows area to Table Mesa Shopping and, and Fairview area. So how's that being factored in, if at all? Kind of like what, some, some changes in current residents habits by that maybe having better bike paths and pedestrian paths.
If I make colloquy on the colloquy, because I was, I was going to ask a question along the veins of what. Aaron and Rachel are asking and I just want to go ahead and put it out there so, so you can. Answer it all at once. So my question has to do with, has there been, has. Has any thought been given to needing to revisit the city's connections plan? And if so, what kind of thought has been given to that? So it kind of goes into both the questions that Aaron and Rachel asked.
Sure. And I don't know, Derek, if you want to start, but I, I can certainly jump in as well.
Yeah, I can say that to answer Rachel's question, Rachel, I think was yours specifically about extension of the path across. South Boulder Road to connect to the site and to South Boulder from that direction.
Generally, if you're making improvements that make it more attractive for people to walk and bike from one part of town to the other and it's safer. Because right now, like if you're traveling Table Mesa, like my, my son doesn't usually bike to high school. Because it's especially at that time in the morning, as we've heard from a lot of people, it's so congested and, and not a real safe route. So if there becomes a really viable path for families to use, especially that are getting over to high school or middle school over there. Just, I just wondered how that, if that is taken into account when you're looking at these numbers or, or how that's taken into account.
It hasn't been the, in the current study, but it is something that I think that is, it, it does seem to be a, a gap. And the connection there. I'm not sure how, how to handle that. It's a, that. I know that if I'm, if I'm thinking about what you're speaking about correctly, Rachel, it's, there's the path that comes down 36 essentially. It runs parallel to 36, but then there's, that path does not make it across South Boulder Road right there. And I, and I'm not sure. I'm not sure what, how to solve that problem. It seems like something that maybe this, the city and CU could take a look at down the road when we start developing here. And start to looking, looking at different TDM things we can do. I think it seems like a, a good fertile ground for collaboration. But I, I do recognize that as an issue, that kind of gap between bicycle transit between the, you know, between campus toward the. I guess that would be toward the north, toward campus and back to the, to the south campus.
Yeah. And, and that may be Mary's point is like, it's only going to be, you know, as, as good as the connections between the spaces, right? So I don't know how that's looked at holistically as part of this, but I also just wondered for the numbers for the, the counts, how, how does that get factored in?
One of the conversations I've had with C staff, Mike Sweeney and I have talked about how to shed some light on that issue. And then the updated report, you'll see a, a figure that, that overlays the city's multimodal connections map on top of this part of town. And to help highlight the potential to improve those bicycle and pedestrian connections. And, and so that will be incorporated. We have also. Heard from city staff that maybe we haven't been aggressive enough in focusing on some of the bicycle and pedestrian. Or particularly bicycle and transit connectivity between the campuses. And so we'll be scrutinizing the assumptions we've made there as well. But beyond that, I don't have a specific path or a specific, a, a number associated with a specific connection.
Mary, did that get to your question or?
Yeah, somewhat, especially the part about overlaying the connections plan on this. And, and seeing whether or not that needs to change someone, adjust to the needs of. This area or the, the upcoming needs of this area. And, and I have another question, but I'll wait my turn.
Great. And I have a colloquy and then we'll go on to Adam, Mary and Miri by. But my colloquy, Bill, just about your assumptions that were made, there will be on order. If the build-out happens in the way that the university and the city have been discussing, there's 1,100 units, a little more than 2,000 people. Whether they're students or faculty or grad students. The, the question I have is, did you ascribe a different traffic pattern to those residents? Because they're mostly presumably going to go either to East Campus or to the main campus. As opposed to traveling kind of a new build at 30th and Pearl. Those folks could go anywhere, right, for, for their trips, particularly for their work. But it seems like the folks who live here are going to be traveling specifically to the other campuses in town or to that campus. So did you have any different travel behavior for the residents of the site?
Yes, yes, we did. And we were asked specifically to start with instituted transportation engineers. Trip rates that were most appropriate for a college-type senior, upperclassman housing or. Married student housing. But we started there, but then looked at what we know, where we've studied other, other types of housing. Areas in Boulder at CU campus, camp, the various CS campuses and then compared the rates. And made sure that at the end of the day, we had a trip generation rates for the housing specifically that was representative of. Of what we thought would, would occur and, and is consistent with what we saw occurring at other housing areas for CU in Boulder. And then with the non-housing academic portion of the trip generation, we specifically used a trip generation rate. That was based on observed trip making on the east campus. And because there isn't an IT cookbook for academic facilities in Boulder, Colorado. So we, we, there, we used what we saw happening for automobile trip generation on the east campus. on the East Campus and then applied that for the 500,000 square feet of, of academic space that's anticipated, or at least was included in this study.
Thank you very much. And then I've got Adam, Mary and Miri by. Adam?
Thanks, Sam. One of my, just quick questions, and I think one of the bigger concerns about the traffic study was one of the only non-COVID times where there was data taken was while there wasn't school in session.
Right.
Which kind of is, you know, a big deal since we are a school-based town, both high schools and major college. So was there any reason particularly behind that date? And will that sort of, you know, be borne out in the data in a certain way?
Well, yes, there was a very good reason why we picked that date to count because that was the absolute soonest day we could count after the work scope was approved by the city and CU. It just so happened to be in the week before Thanksgiving was the first week that we had authorization to get out there. And we needed to count those six onramps. It's the only thing we needed to count. And because we had pre-COVID information and all the other 58 out of 64 movements that we are interested in. So we had, but we wanted to get some numbers for that, those six onramps. And the only time we could count was that week before Thanksgiving. We compared that traffic count in, during COVID to counts from a year ago before COVID and came up with an adjustment factor. We actually used a comparison to October counts from the previous year on purpose. And we've, people think we're trying to finesse some, some underhanded comparison there. But really what we're trying to do is avoid the holiday season adjustment. We're trying to adjust for COVID, not to adjust for COVID and the impact of the holiday season. Because as traffic engineers, we never count from the Thanksgiving week on in November. So when we had a count before Thanksgiving in November, it compared well to some previous counts that were from October in the previous year. So we, that was one of the things we tested, but we also took and did a count during COVID at the intersection of Loop Drive and Table Mesa and compared. That's one of the intersections where we had pre-COVID information. So we were able to compare that COVID versus pre-COVID in November. And we saw an adjustment, an appropriate adjustment of 1.33 to take the current counts and bring them up to pre-COVID conditions. That's, that's, and that's the same comparison we saw between the October of last year to the early November of this year, the pre-holiday COVID adjustment. So yes, we have, and we're doing this for every study all over Colorado that we have to do right now. We have to go through this COVID adjustment process. It's nothing specific to this study. But we had good data to make those adjustments and it was only done on six of, of the, of the 64 movements that we have in our study. And, and yet at the end of the day, we believe our pre-COVID estimates are conservatively high, if anything, because of the, the fact that I don't think we're ever going back to commuting like we did before COVID.
Thanks for that, Bill.
Yep.
Great. Mary and Miri by. Mary?
Thanks, Sam. So similar to Sam's question about the trips coming out of this area would be mostly inter-campus trips. So I'm just wondering in terms of the, the planning piece of it is what work is being done to address potential routes or changes in, in our connections plan with respect to that inter-campus travel?
Well, I'll start and then Derek can, can jump in too. But we have projected the logical routes between the various campuses based on their physical proximity in Boulder and, and who might want to go where. And, and so that's part of the trip distribution portion of the study. And then with that information, that would lend, that would help define where the transit routes are put in place, the high frequency transit and shuttles that will connect the various campuses and what routes they'll use to connect the campuses. And we've talked about that, whether it makes sense to use Foothills Parkway or US 36 or Broadway. And there may be different shuttle routes. So certainly some thought was put into where traffic might go and how it might be accommodated. And when we overlay that connections plan, that'll help us with the bicycle portion as well.
And I would say that I have nothing to add. I would just dumb down what Bill just said. So he said it well.
Okay, thank you. And I'm not sure what, what the scope of the questions we're allowed to ask here. Is it, and this is a question for Sam, is it just wide-ranging on all of the pieces?
Right now, I think we're focused on traffic only. So traffic and trips is, is this part of the presentation?
Okay. So the other question I have with respect to traffic is, I think we can all recall the, the little tight spot that we got into with CDOT in the initial phases, phases of this planning. So I'm just wondering, A, is CDOT at the table or attending some of the meetings? And what kinds of, and if not, what, how will we be consulting with CDOT?
Mary, can I just ask, is that mostly directed to Bill as a traffic item? Or are you asking that more to Phil and the project management team?
I think that would be more to, to the project management team.
Got it. So Phil, if you wanted to speak to that.
Yep. And I might, I have a colleague, Garrett Slater, joining us from Transportation and Mobility, and he can provide some additional information about that.
So Garrett Slater, Principal Transportation Projects Engineer with the Department of Transportation and Mobility. And the, the interaction we've had with CDOT to date has been very preliminary in nature and primarily regarding the access that's been proposed as State Highway 93. The, the, the areas that have been focused on in the traffic study are largely the domain of the city. And so the state would not be involved in that type of a review. They might come into play a little bit with any sort of timing modifications that would happen at the, at the ramps to the interchange at 36. But largely the, the focus is going to be on the access at State Highway 93. And we have had preliminary coordination with them and then we'll be following up with them in more detail as the process continues.
Great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Mary. Miri by.
Thanks, Sam. So I have a few questions. First, I guess I'll address the easy one. So I maybe am not understanding this all the way. And so happy to, if this is going to be updated when you come back to us, Bill. But you stated on two different topics now about your thoughts that you don't think people will be going through Morehead and some of the neighborhoods because it could be a one to three minute travel time longer, which I can tell you personally, if it's less traffic and it takes me longer, I'll do in a heartbeat. And I'm guessing there's other people who feel the same way. And then that you feel that you don't think the levels are going to return to COVID, which I can tell you, I just was in Tucson, Arizona, and it's the worst it's ever been in 25 years. My husband, who travels I-25 and 70, it's right back to where it was. And family members who have just been back to Chicago, it's worse than it's ever been. So I don't personally experience that. Maybe Boulder's a bubble, but I highly doubt it. So I guess the question comes down to on your thoughts on this. Are you gonna, what happens when people actually, when this, I understand we all hope that they don't use the neighborhood and we hope the levels of traffic don't return. But what happens if it does? Is there a contingency plan? And are we going to be receiving an update on this when you guys come back to us? So that's my first part of my question.
So I will say that, I'll start at the, the second part about COVID, my opinion about the, the pre-COVID, going, going back to pre-COVID for office workers. I don't believe we'll ever go back to commuting the way we did before COVID. We found out how to commute and how to interact like we're doing right now. And none of us drove to downtown Boulder to be in the same room. And so we're conducting business without having to drive. And it's not saying we, that there won't be peak hours. It's not saying that traffic won't go up and down during the day. But I don't believe that the office component of the commute will be as, as high as it was before. That said, there will still be congestion and I'm not saying this solves all the problems. And in, in that context, there may be incentive to find a faster route. And maybe that route is to go down Morehead to get to the main campus. And I can tell you, I spent three and a half years living on that, the southeast end of Morehead while I was attending CU. And if I didn't have to go down Morehead, I wouldn't have because it's a circuitous, the right turn, a left turn, another right turn, another left turn to get through where there are two other routes that are much more direct in terms of the number of turns and a better, and in my mind, a better way to go. But I'm not saying people won't try to go through Morehead. But we have heard tonight, we've heard others talk about it in other meetings about the potential maybe to make Morehead a neighborhood bikeway where it's, it's discouraged to have cut-through traffic, non-local traffic using a road like Morehead when there are more arterial-based connections. So I can't speak to when that's done or how that's done at this point, but certainly there are, there are potential options to try to mitigate significant neighborhood cut-through.
Okay. So I'm understanding that there's no technical contingency plan. It's just that there might be some plans in the work to mitigate this and adjust how the traffic flow is.
I, I mean, I'm not sure what you mean by a technical contingency plan, but I mean, I could route some traffic down Morehead in the updated study. I could do that. I don't, I don't think, I don't think that will really happen to a significant level. But if the group thinks that's the appropriate way to distribute traffic, I can try to put some there. But again, I don't think, and I don't think that's going to be the route of choice for many people.
And I understand that. I think it's just one of those, it'd be nice to see it in the option because what we always think would happen, sometimes it's not the case. And so for the neighbors who are concerned about this, it'd be nice for them to have an understanding of what could actually happen or a model at least. So that's just a thought there. The second question I guess would be regarding 36. So often we see that the on-ramp to 36 is completely backed up. So I mean, is, again, is this coming back to us? How, how are we planning on mitigating this? I understand that it's, again, maybe a special time with COVID, but the on-ramp to 36 is always backed up. I mean, that's just a fact of life. So is, is there a way for this to be worked into the plan a little bit more or addressed further?
Can I, can I ask, which, are you referring to a specific on-ramp? The on-ramp that goes toward Denver or the on-ramp that goes back toward Boulder from Table Mesa?
Well, to be honest, both are often backed up. I was going more for the morning on-ramp into Denver.
Okay. Well, I think the good news is that from this particular site, I'm not sure that that's a very high demand in the morning to leave here and go toward Denver. It could be for spouses that are unrelated to this, to connecting to CU. But most of the, the traffic in the morning is probably going toward the other campuses. But the other on-ramp onto US 36, which may be of concern, and we have identified as potentially being of concern in the future, is the on-ramp to turn left to go back northwest toward CU main campus. And we have identified a way to mitigate that left turn congestion. It'll likely require a, a traffic signal, much like the signal that exists at Broadway in college, where one direction of travel never has to stop because there's never any conflicting traffic. But the oncoming traffic is stopped to allow the left turn to go onto the ramp. And we believe that's a legitimate mitigation measure for that on-ramp congestion.
Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it.
Great. And Erin?
Well, just a quick colloquy in terms of nearby, you're asking about contingency plans if it doesn't work out. And, and certainly if, if your guesses are wrong about Morehead, maybe not so much. But there is the trip cap though, right? CU is, is held to a maximum number of trips and they, they have to decrease them if they exceed them. So if, if Bill, somehow you're wrong and commuting goes to 120% of pre-COVID conditions, they're still stuck with that trip cap, right?
Derek's nodding his head. So that's my understanding.
Your question. Yeah. Great. Thanks.
Great. Well, seeing the other, Mary, your hand's still up. You have another question? Nope. Okay. Then I have a few. Bill, for the traffic study you did, what assumptions did you make about Tantra? The connection from Tantra to CU South?
We assumed a relatively small amount of traffic would use Tantra, say from CU South to get onto westbound Table Mesa. And I don't have that volume open in front of me, but as I recall, it's probably 3% of the traffic might want to go through that way. And, and we did that because at the time, we didn't know, we don't have a finished site plan. We don't know how that route might be mitigated, but it was always done with the understanding that at very least, that would be an emergency access into the, the CU South campus. But it could also potentially maybe serve a little bit of the, say, residential development if it were right there at the end of Tantra. Because Tantra, right now it stubs out into the edge of CU South. And, and so we did assign a little bit of traffic to go on Tantra. But in the management of how to enforce or regulate, that would be a, a site planning issue and/or whether or not it's reserved for just emergency access.
Got it. And so towards that end, and maybe Derek, this question's for you as well. Is there a desire on the part of CU to have that Tantra connection? Because I think as far as neighborhood concern about auto traffic through neighborhoods, I would think that would be one of the points of concern. So what's the CU perspective on the Tantra connection?
So we've had that as, look at it both as both a connection to the site, just an open connection to the site and an emergency access. I think right now where we're leaning is on emergency access because we have, I believe, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, but there were only seven trips that were accounted for on that.
During the peak hour, we didn't assign a ton of traffic there. As I mentioned, it was a fairly low volume and it's through a school zone and it's, it's past existing residences. And so, and that's why we didn't assign a lot of traffic there.
Yeah. So I think that we would look more toward really Highway 93 as adding that as a primary access from the south and Table Mesa, having those be the primary access for residents and the traffic coming in and off the site. Tantra, we would be okay with that going to more just emergency access.
Okay. I, I think that would help erase some questions about what would happen there if that were that way. And, and I guess then, Bill, this last question's for you. If you are imagining folks taking Morehead as some kind of shortcut from South Campus to Main Campus, I guess that's the only one that would make a lot of sense. Would you imagine they'd come South Loop Drive and then go on Table Mesa and then onto Morehead? Is that like the alternative to going on 36 or Broadway that you'd imagine?
Well, that would be the only choice, the way to get to Morehead, right? Would be to go from Loop Drive to onto, make a left onto Table Mesa and then make a right onto Morehead. And that would be the route they'd have to take to get to Morehead. And, and so they'd turn off of, off of Table Mesa rather than going over to Broadway, say, and, and traveling on Broadway. And they've already made a decision not to use US 36 because they turned left instead of right coming out of Loop Drive.
Great. And just out of curiosity and maybe for people watching who are concerned about this, how, how do you simulate that? Like if your obvious pathway that's usually quicker would be to take a right off South Loop and then a left and get on 36 versus the longer, as you say, three minutes longer down Morehead. How do you have a simulation that takes that into account?
Well, we don't have a very detailed calibrated simulation model to say where you might go. That, the, the level of effort to calibrate a model to make that decision would be pretty significant. And most of the travel models are not at that level of refinement to make that decision. But it would, it would pick particular corridors one over the other. But we don't have a, we don't have a regional or a citywide travel model to run in Boulder. So we had to rely on conversations between C staff and C staff getting an idea of where the, the desire lines were first and foremost, and then, then look at the grid. And it's a little bit of my crystal ball too, on where we think the traffic might go. Looking at how people are going today, looking at the turns that are happening onto Morehead today versus the turns that are happening over onto, onto Broadway, say. So there's not a, a, a travel model that I can point you at and says, that's what we ran and that's all. But it was based on a lot of conversation and estimation. But that's how traffic studies are done. But it was based on a lot of conversation and estimation, but that's how traffic studies are done.
Okay, very good, um I have no more questions, I don't see any other council questions, so Phil, I think we're good to move on.
And Phil before, so should I stay or might there be more traffic questions in the future, or should I'm, are we good for tonight? I would.
Go ahead, Sam.
I was gonna say the same thing, I think I think you're probably good, any other comments that come tonight that are requests to you, I think will come through Phil and Derek to you, so. I think you've answered our questions.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um so I am going to relinquish relinquish the power of technology to our more capable staff. And Emily, if you want to put the slide up to slide thirteen, that would be. Uh great, appreciate it, um so the next topic is the general terms, and so we mentioned earlier that. We would anticipate the agreement having some kind of general terms that impacts the entire site. Um a few new concepts, though, came out of the public engagement process that we wanted to flag for council that we're working on. One of which is affordable housing, and so council's well aware that we have a policy in the comprehensive plan around annexations. And affordable housing is one of the kind of centerpieces of annexations, particularly ones that have a lot of development potential like this. Uh like this application does. Um other um community benefits that we would also consider would be things like. Open space and land for public dedication, and so this project is focused largely on those latter two. Community benefits, but we heard through the engagement process and obviously city staff agrees that affordable housing is critical, and that can be a part of this package, then. It would um it would certainly strengthen the community benefit package at the end. Uh the university is aware that we're interested in this and is also aware of the the need in the community for for this type of housing. And so it's basically in the queue now to be discussed. Um another thing we heard was what happens if CU Boulder sells a portion of the property. After annexation or the entire property, and so what we have preliminary agreement on now is that if that happens. The city would receive a first right of offer, a first right of refusal to purchase the property. Um additionally, um if the city is not the ultimate um holder of the title, it goes to a different um property owner. Then city regulations processes would apply um to that new owner. Um annexation contingent on the flood mitigation project, in just a moment, we'll have a slide on that, so we'll we'll touch on it there. Some minor changes, we are working um with the university to determine how to best apply our outdoor lighting standards and. Uh wetland standards to this site, as well as opportunities for the city to review and comment on. Uh this future CU South master plan and uh future development plans for the site. Um the review of plans would offer a formal opportunity for the the city staff to review and get counsel and possibly also planning board input. And provide those to the university, it would probably include two different topics, one would be a more of a compliance check, like the buildings are this tall. But we also wanted to work into the agreement and understanding and intent that. We don't know what we don't know now and and in in uh or wh- wh- what what will be important in fifteen, twenty years from now, and so. The university has agreed that we'll also have discretionary comments, and if the university cannot meet those, then we'll receive a response um explaining why. Um there's also no change to two other items, one is the fire station and the other is a payment and low of taxes, wanted to mention that the fire station. Um you've likely received some emails, what is on the table right now relating to that item is two acres of land on CU South for a public safety facility. Um it's probably going to be up to the city and the university to work together after the annexation at the appropriate time to determine how to best use that those two acres of land. If that's a new fire station, um and um we also want to um emphasize that. Um it by receiving two acres of land in South Boulder, it doesn't automatically trigger a closure of an fire station like Station Number Four. So wanted to just emphasize that, um the payment and low of taxes. Um is a point of disagreement currently with the city staff and the university staff. Um the backstory there is that the university does not pay property taxes, and so early in the process, the city staff proposed. That we enter into an a voluntary arrangement in which the university would provide. An annual payment to the city for city services like fire and rescue services. Um that has not been something we've been able to reach agreement on, we did provide more information in the briefing book attachment aid to them to the uh packet tonight. Um that includes some additional information about that, I'm happy to answer questions too, Emily, could you go to the next slide? The um annexation contingent on flood mitigation, um if you could go to the slide fourteen. Um. Under this scenario, um for example, if the property were annexed in twenty twenty-one. There would be a period of time, probably several years, maybe it's twenty twenty-four, we not, we're not quite sure yet. Where the university were forego all development except for recreation fields. During that time, the city would would be pursuing in earnest the final design and permitting for the flood mitigation project. And there'd be a set point in time where the question would be called of is the flood mitigation project approved? If the answer is yes, then the university would proceed with the development of the site consistent with the annexation agreement. But if no, then the city could take action to de-annex CU South, and so that would make it then outside the city. Um under the uh in in the unincorporated uh Boulder County, Emily, you can go to the next slide and then um stop sharing that. The those are the only slides relating to some of the general terms, and so. We could probably stop sharing screen now, and the question we have is if council members agree with the direction and focus of those. General terms acknowledging that the final agreement will have more things, but those are probably the most important.
Great, thank you, Phil, um so I guess questions or comments on the general terms? Mark?
I I think uh the negotiating team and staff are making great progress on a number of issues. I have a question relating to uh a subsequent sale of the property. Phil, in your in your correspondence with me, you indicated that the annexation agreement will run with the land, that that is correct?
Yes.
Okay, then then my question would actually be for Tom, uh Tom Carr. Tom, if that is the case, what is the practical impact of that in. Uh assuring that we don't get a use for the property and a user for the property. That is inconsistent with what we're negotiating in the annexation agreement.
Your question is if the subsequent sale to a third party, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and 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 if the annexation agreement in effect is running with the land, does that require any subsequent purchaser to build? To comply with all of the traffic requirements, to build eleven hundred units, to stay within the the uh the buffer zones and the. Limited development zones um. And and all the other design guidelines, in effect, can it be converted to an office park or a um? Or even an educational use that is vastly different than what we're negotiating?
So that that's generally what runs with the land means, is it's a, it is binding on future purchasers, you would also, Mark, have the option as a council to legislate restrictions. Uh for that area by by zoning it or building in other restrictions, the challenge, of course, with CU is that. Uh they don't abide by city zoning, so that the annexation agreement is designed to restrict them in the future by agreement in ways we couldn't do legislatively. Uh if uh i- if you were worried about futures transfer to non- non-governmental entities. You could draft regulations that zoned it in a way that would protect it uh appropriately.
Okay.
That belt and suspenders would be what I would recommend.
Can I, can I colloquy on that for a second?
Sure, sure.
Um so just want to make sure I'm following what you're saying, Tom, so simultaneously with annexation, could we pass an ordinance, say, that says. This zoning applies to this, you know, CU South area that says it's limited to um. Ownership by or or I don't know, use somehow that's educational related or university related or somehow gets it like. Ensuring that um. You know, part of our assumptions are that people who are living there are going to be basically working at CU and going to school there and sort of. Encapsulated within that region and and use, so is there some ordinance that we could pass that would sort of. Lock that in in the event of of a future sale and and limit it in those ways?
So I I'm gonna hesitate, yes, from a legal standpoint, you could. Um I would defer to my colleagues in planning to talk about how we would do something like that. Uh usually doing that kind of zoning is a heavy lift, so and since it's not necessary for this. Because CU wouldn't be subject to it, uh you could put it on the long-wage plan, or you could pass an ordinance that basically. Did it on on for on an overall overarching basis, I'd have to think through how you'd do it. But yet the the basic answer to your question is Rachel, yes, you could do something like that.
And if I can colloquy back for just one second, I I obviously a lot of people are very concerned. That this property not be used for something other than what we are negotiating with CU. If ten years from now. Um CU wanted to sell the property, whether it's developed or half-developed or not developed at all. Um to the Toll Brothers Development Company back east. Would would that be able to occur in light of the obligations that are being imposed upon that purchaser? Would they be able to come in and say, well, we'd like to do instead of of eleven hundred units? And a couple of educational buildings, we'd like to come in and do uh four thousand market rate condos.
So right now, yes, um he, the city would have a right of first refusal, which is what we're negotiating, but what I'm suggesting is that council could. Uh could zone it in a way that uh an applicant would be subject to those restrictions, as long as you do it before the sale, before the uh, before somebody makes an application. Uh as long as you're not depriving the future owner of all all potential value of the land. You can zone it in a way that's consistent with your your goals for the community.
Well, Tom, can you clarify the the difference between doing this through zoning and doing this by having this annexation agreement run with the land, I was under the impression. That every covenant contained in the annexation agreement, if it is running with the land. Would be binding upon purchasers, successors and assigns. And you wouldn't be able to come in and make that proposal for four thousand condos. Because you're obligated to follow this plan, is is that incorrect?
No, that's absolutely correct, Mark, as I said before, belt and suspenders. If you want to be absolutely certain, you could do a legislative approach that would bind non-governmental parties.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Also getting the intent from the planning side too of it's sold. The next day, this private private property owner has public zoning for a hundred and acres or so. What can they do there, and that may not be what we had in mind now, and so what are the mechanisms? To to kind of address that, and so I think it gives us something that you want at least, Mark.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Aaron?
Yeah, well, I'll start with a colloquy, that is an interesting line of questioning, so I think if if this all proceeds, we may want to consider. Changing the underlying zoning to something that would not be terribly attractive to a third party that would, you know. It on top of the annexation agreement, right, um so that's an interesting idea to look at down the line if this continues. My question was uh just about the the uh de-annexation in case of not getting permits process, and this is a creative idea. So appreciate uh people looking into this, um my question, though, is that. To to what extent are we. Uh required to make a good faith effort with these clauses to obtain those approvals, but like let's say that that we applied for permits and one of the approving bodies came back and said. You know what, we can't approve that as is, tweak it by five percent and you'll be fine. You know, it what what if some future council decided, well, hey, this is a great excuse to de-annex, you know, for some reason, you know. How do how do we bind ourselves to a a good faith effort to cure any problems that are found during the permitting process?
Tom, so David here um is on the project and he is researching this concept, it's in its infancy right now, we kind of identified it and wanted to, in the spirit of transparency, just share everything we're talking about. So I don't know what the answer is, but um it would have to be something that. Both the city and the university would be comfortable with if it's in the annexation agreement, and what you're describing gives more latitude to the city, so. But um I'm not sure legally speaking what that would mean.
Well, I'll I'll just convert that into a comment and say that we should chase that down a little bit, right, to to have something. It's not just a hundred percent like, hey, the they didn't grant the permit, but something like, you know, including good faith efforts to to cure, you know, problems with them.
And as Phil said, David's looking at this, we don't have any experience with the annexation, so it's it's a concept they're working on, we'll we'll provide updates as we learn more.
It's a new term to me. Thanks, that's it.
Okay, Adam?
Thanks, Sam, uh I hadn't realized that we had moved on from comments to uh in the last section, so I'll just say if. We need a traffic mitigation on Moorhead, just put a three-way stop at every intersection along the way. And I'm not sure anyone would ever use that street again. So that that's always an option if we need to go for the nuclear option there. And as far as this uh number of slides, I remember bringing up the. Sort of fees uh for usage of city services since CU uses city services but doesn't really contribute to them. And I I realize that's a tough point, but I think that's a very, very important point to negotiate, simply because. The impact of CU in general on the city, I think, needs to be. You know, repaid in some some way um along the lines. Just because it is a huge city entity that uses a number of city services, so just want to reiterate that.
Great, and I apologize, you're right, Adam, I had not um called for comments on transportation, so in answering. Phil's questions on this um deal terms, please feel free to weigh in with anything that you didn't get in on transportation, Mary?
Yeah, thanks, Sam, and I'm where um Adam is, both in not realizing we hadn't provided the comments on transportation and also on. Um the comment regarding the the pilot fees. Um but my comment on um transportation is to just make sure that as we're moving forward, that we're looking at the big picture. And looking at how the uses in this area will be affecting our um connections plan. Um as well as looking at the travel, the inter-campus travel and making sure that we have the right. Um mitigations in place, so that's my comment on that, my questions, uh my question has to do with affordable housing. And um. What are we thinking to this point, and is there a um? Some sort of a thought to address um a broad um. Set of um incomes for the people that would qualify for the affordable housing, so in other words. All staff um that might be coming into the campus and not just like the um upper level staff.
Derek, this may be a good time for you to um chime in, I think the university's. Comments around affordable housing are a little nuanced, and I don't want to misspeak misspeak here.
Uh yeah, I can say, Mary, to answer your question directly, uh we we recognize uh that that is a concern and we reckon, we have the same concern with how to. Uh most equitably uh create, if we're going to create housing here, how do we do it for uh. Uh across the community, not just for one segment of the community, so that is foremost on our minds. Uh with regard to affordable housing, uh you know, this is something that I know the city has mentioned that is very important to to them. Uh what we don't haven't gotten yet is a specific ask for what that affordable housing could look like. Um but uh another another point, and I made this in other meetings recently, which is that. Uh the university as a public entity cannot avail itself of the of the federal tax incentives that actually incentivize the development of affordable housing. And so it's a challenge for us to to develop what is uh what people typically prefer to whenever they mean, or whatever they say affordable housing. So it's something that we um currently, we don't have an answer for, uh but uh again, I'll make the commitment that we are looking for the most affordable, attainable product that we can put out there for our community.
Great, thank you.
Um is that all, Mary?
Yep, nearby.
Um yeah, and I'll just wrap up my comments for traffic because I didn't know we're completely done with that, um. So I will just say that I would prefer to go off of what our residents um are stating and their concerns, rather than the thought of people who don't live in Boulder. Uh our residents do live here and deal with this on a daily basis, especially when um. Traffic sit at Stan Stoll or going five miles an hour and backed up like it usually is, so. Uh I would strongly um urge us looking at ways to mitigate Moorhead and other areas that um could be impacted. Uh by the traffic that's. Always going to back up, I'm sorry, it doesn't matter if COVID or not, uh we're going to continue to increase as the population continues to increase, so. Um for thoughts to be brought into this rather than facts is not something I'm interested in addressing, so. Um doing this in a factual way and and with hardcore uh evidence. So doing this in a factual way and with hardcore evidence and listening to what our residents say is more important to me.
Great, thanks. I only have a couple of comments, none on traffic here. Derek, I just mentioned that the way nonprofits typically deal with the tax credits, the light tax credits, is they get resold at a discount. So you can usually get 85 or 90% of the value by using a third party that can monetize those tax credits. So I'll just put out there that I think you can get a lot of the value as a public institution. It's not 100% for sure, but that is definitely something to explore when you're looking at financing for affordable housing is how to monetize those with partners. So that's one bit. And the other, I'm just going to emphasize that I agree with the point about impact fees. You know, we will have to provide the water in the sewer and everything that goes on there. And the flood control obviously is the main point of the project. So we will need to be discussing, you know, what the, how to make that all square up over time. I think we're all well aware of it, but I'll just say it out loud here for that. But I think, you know, I like the general terms that we're talking about here. I think it's going in the right direction with the annexation with the first right of offer. I really do appreciate, Mark, the concept of looking at the zoning. I think that's an important way to back up whatever we get in the annexation agreement. So that's all I've got on this part. Mary, your hand's still up, I assume. Do you have one more? Nope, okay, very good. So Phil, I think we're ready to move on to the next section.
Okay, Emily, if you don't mind, go into number 16. There'll be some animations with this one. This is the area designated public in the comprehensive plan. It's of the 308 acres of CU South. It represents 129 acres. And so this is coming up. Thank you, Emily. You can press next once. So through the various recommendations and it's outlined there in the darker line, we, city staff are recommending through the totality of the agreement that upwards of 40% of the site be conveyed as open space flood mitigation and for the public safety facility we just discussed. And so that's land that we're negotiating around. Of the 300 acres, 308 acres, 129 are anticipated for development with housing being the predominant use and small-scale academic buildings being constructed after a significant amount of housing is built. We can, we assembled this key issues map to highlight that some of the constraints we're imposing on the site would actually further limit that. And so Emily, you can press next. City staff is proposing, and press it again, that a buffer along the western property line be established. So after meeting with some of the neighborhoods, we were initially thinking about that certainly around the high view subdivision to the southwest, but we also heard from the South Creek Seven folks that they were interested in that. And so we have proposed that and are negotiating it. It'd also be a good location for a multi-use path per our transportation master plan. You can hit that again, Emily. So that would also, there's also going to be some areas, the university is developing consistent with our wetland standards. And so there are some wetlands on the site shown there. You can press it again, Emily. And the university's also agreed to limit any development away from steep slopes. And so that's that southwest hillside on the southwest portion of the site, again. And we've also have preliminary agreement on, and you can hit it again too, on a limited development zone on the southwest portion of the site. And so there, that's looking at really compatibility with the adjacent single-family neighborhood and limiting some of the uses to residential and likely not multifamily residential. Can hit it one more time, Emily. And what that would probably leave would be kind of pockets of development when, when all is said and done, given the constraints that we're noting on the site. So next slide. We are also, the guiding principles has a section around prohibited uses. And so some of those uses include things like a large-scale sports venue, like a football stadium. That was a big concern in 2017 when we were adopting the comprehensive plan. And so our task at this point is to define what that actually means. So recently, the university proposed a large sports venue be capped and so no larger than a 300, a 3,000-person seating venue. The definition of this would also need to be included in the annexation agreement for what exactly we mean by, by a sports field. But overall, that would have a similar intensity, likely a POTS field, if that cap were to make it into the agreement. Next slide. The guiding principles also detail that large research complexes, like those on the east campus, will be prohibited. What we're seeing here is is being proposed is, just for context, the sustainability, energy, and environment community shown on the bottom photo on the top is 292,000 square feet. And the sustainability, energy, and environment lab just next to it is 142,000 square feet. Combined, that would certainly be a research complex. And what's being proposed by the university is 175,000 gross square feet, which when developing that, I know there were discussions around the aerospace building as being a potential example of what that may look like on CU South in terms of the overall size of non-residential buildings. You can go to the next slide, please. There'll be other prohibited uses as well. The first three are in the briefing book as initially proposed by the university. And we'll need to work on other definitions like enclosed buildings in a floodplain. We've agreed that no enclosed building will be in a 100 or a 500-year floodplain on the site. And we'll also be looking at specifically defining industrial uses to prohibit those uses as well. Next slide. Okay, and you can hit next until those two boxes are just filled, Emily. The guiding principles also talk a bit about balancing residential and non-residential. And so the box on the left is, talks a bit about phasing and ensuring that, except for the recreational facilities, that development will be phased only after, a non-residential space will be phased only after a significant amount of housing is built. The university recently proposed to construct 100 residential units before constructing any non-residential space, with an exception of ground floor retail as part of a mixed-use building. The rationale there is to really try to limit some of the off-site trips. And so that's something that we've been talking about of accessory uses that would limit some of those trips to the grocery store. The other guiding principle is around housing being the predominant use and emphasizing housing units over non-residential space. We don't have that one resolved yet, but in the spirit of transparency, wanted to share what we're talking about. And that's a square foot ratio. And so at any given time on the site, we'd be looking at a square footage overall of housing and a square footage overall of non-residential space. And if you thought about it as a ratio or a scale, it would always be leaning towards the housing. How much it leans towards the housing is still a topic of discussion. And that, if you have any input around that tonight, it would certainly be useful. Next slide, Emily. This is the other concept that you've heard about a little bit in public comment is that the university has agreed to comply with the city's 55-foot charter height limit and measure it consistent with city code. However, we did recognize that as the elevation increases to the west, so this is a cross-section looking north, and that limited impact zone is that southwest portion of the site we just saw. Those tall buildings like that may not be appropriate. And so what we have agreement on is to limit the overall roof lines of buildings as it, at roughly the height of the single-family homes, one or two-story homes at the high view subdivision. And so you can go to the next slide, Emily. And so what that would look like is, this is that the highest point of the site looking north. You can press next once, Emily. And if you could just imagine a horizontal plane going over the site and no building on the site, regardless of location, would be able to exceed that particular limit. You can hit next two more times, Emily. That fence there is, I believe, the property line. And so what you see on the left side of the fence is a strip of land owned by the city. And in our transportation master plan, there's a multi-use path coming through there. But we're also talking about that buffer area, which would be additional, kind of additional buffering from those homes. That could also include a path landscaping and so on. Next slide, Emily. And that, those are the key points. So we could probably stop sharing there. I did want to provide some, a couple of notes. The community input on the development of the site, I think there's a wide range of views on whether or not, whether or not the site should be developed. I think there's a lot of community members who do not feel that it's appropriate. A lot of concern around neighborhood impacts like traffic and the loss of the undeveloped space in this area. Others that are more supportive of it often cite benefits like housing and gaining more facilities like recreational fields. The planning board did note some preference for more housing and less non-residential space. As you'll remember, the scenario and the transportation plan assumed. And there seems to be some interest on capping the amount of non-residential space that could be built on the site from the planning board. There was some interest in open space within the development itself and addressing that and not having a sea of parking. And lastly, that the development limitations, like the height limits and things, seem like a reasonable approach. So that's the tee-up for that item. And questions and input would be greatly appreciated.
Mark?
First, I think the height ceiling is a terrific concept. I'm glad you guys are getting to agreement on it. I think it's really excellent. Are you planning to put any operational constraints on this 3,000-capacity facility? Because I assume that the noise from that will be heard throughout the neighboring residential areas.
So we have talked about applying outdoor lighting standards, but operationally with hours of operation noise, that's something that did come up at the Open Space Board of Trustees and would certainly be, we'd be interested in hearing council's opinion on it. It's not something that we've dove into with the negotiations yet.
Well, then I, then I will express a view that we ought to give some consideration to those constraints because a sports contest in front of 3,000 rabid fans, if it happens to be at 10 o'clock at night, is entirely disruptive to communities next door. Different types of activities there will generate different types of noise levels and both in terms of hours of operation and types of activities we ought to be looking at. In my hotline, I facetiously, you know, talked about a heavy metal band concert, you know, and I don't think that would be, that would go over really well. So I think from the, from the perspective of those neighboring communities, we ought to be looking at ways in which we can, you know, both keep the, both light and sound ought to be uppermost in our minds.
Is that all, Mark?
That is it.
Great. I have a colloquy on something that you raised that I didn't, I just wanted to ask a question. Maybe it's for Derek. You know, in the kind of outlines within the site, we've seen the transportation hub. And then I saw most recently, there's a circle for a parking garage. And so my impression was that there would be a concentrated site for parking, one or two that were garage-oriented. Is that correct? Or will there be parking kind of distributed throughout? What's the view on auto traffic and specifically parking?
We don't, we don't know just because we don't have plans out there yet. It would follow our, I think, what we're looking to do on campus is to, is to place parking in the most strategic locations and accessible locations and keep it more around the perimeter. Now, I don't know if that'll translate out to here, but I don't think that, we're not planning on building a giant parking garage there. I think that was, certainly, there was a parking garage that was in some earlier renderings from a number of years ago. But that's not something we've discussed or have any plans for at this point. We do have, with regard to parking, we want parking to play a big role in the TDM program. So that's going to be limiting, limited parking, and it'll be shared unbundled and managed, and it will be paid parking. So those are kind of the principles that, the acronym is SUMP, that's used for that. But those are principles that we use on campus to discourage vehicle trips and discourage, and discourage people having cars, bringing cars to campus. So we'll use those same principles here on the site, and those are part of the design guidelines.
Part of the design guidelines, I'll just make a comment while I've got the floor. It seems like parking might be something that we want to put into, you know, the annexation agreements when we understand what principles will be used and they're, they're well-understood going forward. So next, I've got Mary, Rachel, and Aaron. Mary?
Thank you. I was curious as to how the 3,000 number for the sports arena was arrived at.
And Mary, that's probably a question for me, so I'll jump on and answer that. So, and this is, it may be just a misunderstanding and certainly an understandable one because where we came up with that 3,000 number and the POTS field number is, we were trying to define what the threshold is for prohibited use. It's not that we envisioned that we will build POTS field out there at some point or replicate that there. It really is, is that as we were going through, we had this list of prohibited uses and one of those was no large sports complexes. And so we got into a dialogue with staff about, okay, so what is large? And so we were really, then it really depends upon a number. And we chose POTS field is what seemed reasonable because it wasn't a stadium. It's not like Folsom Field. It's not like the event center, which holds 11,000 folks for basketball games. So we wanted to find something that was much smaller than that. But how, and then have everything above that be the prohibited use. So it really was about establishing that threshold and not necessarily planning for a specific field to be developed out on that site. And that's not saying it won't be in the future, but we're trying to establish parameters for those prohibited uses.
And has, thank you for that, Derek. And has the, in connection with this parameter, has parking been considered as one of the parameters that would go along with that?
We've thought about parking. We don't know yet what rec facilities would be developed in that area. This would be in the area where we will have other recreation facilities. That would be other, say, a track and field that can be shared with Parks and Recreation, City, and BBSD. That's one thing that's, we've had discussions about. So we don't necessarily know what that parking would look like there, but we think it would need to occur most likely on the public side of the line and have those fields aligned on the PKUO side. And there's a, there's a boundary there that I can envision, and I apologize if you can't envision that, but it's, we would have to build things like parking on the public area and recreational fields would be on the, in the PKUO area. So wherever that parking would be, it would not be on that, in the same area as the rec fields. But we'd have to develop the rec field so that the parking was close by. So if people were coming to see a certain event there or to participate in rec sports or intramural sports for the university, that they had easy access to that.
Okay, great. And as long as there's some parameters that are being considered, is the time of day another parameter that could be considered?
It's definitely on the table.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you for that. And my next question probably is for you as well. In the building 100 units of housing before building any non-residential, how, would there be kind of a leapfrogging process where you build 100 and then you can build so much non-residential and then you've built that much non-residential? Now you got to build more housing? Or how is that envisioned?
Don't really know. Those are good questions. It's a complicated math problem that we haven't solved yet to try and figure, because it was a guiding principle that was fairly ambiguous that there would be a substantial number of housing units built before any commercial units we built. And so really, we're just trying to come up with a, with a, again, a parameter or a threshold. What is that number? What does that mean? That a substantial or significant number of housing units we built before commercial? And this also plays into the ratio that Phil had talked about earlier. Because there will always be, and it's, that's a struggle, right? We don't know in the phasing of development whether that, you could take, if you could look at that and have that ratio applied at any given point in time, or if it just needs to be at certain stages and overall the development out there meets that. So it, those are still questions that need to be answered.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Mary. Rachel and then Erin.
Yeah, I was kind of colloquying on Mary's points. So for one thing, I, I guess I would just say as somebody who's, you know, in the rooms and following along on these negotiations that, that staff are having, nothing's set in stone yet. So like to me, 3,000 sounds kind of high and as a neighbor, not a number that I, I am in love with yet. So I would just say to council, like part of what we are doing here tonight, I hope, is getting feedback from you all on what you hope to see staff negotiating for. And again, like that, the, you know, I, I think we get a lot of emails like, this is high. I can't believe you're doing that. And like, you know, nothing's been agreed to. So just wanted to highlight that. In terms of, of, I think maybe Mark made the point about a, a heavy metal band. I, this is maybe a question for staff, but I assume that our general noise ordinances come into play here and like, sort of as we've seen happening at the res and they're expanding services out there into the evening hours. Like they're doing serious like sound level checks as to how far away you can hear, what decibel and, and what impacts it will have on the neighborhood. So just wondering, is that accurate that, that at a sports venue, if, if a heavy metal band was playing outdoors at 10:00 PM and all these new residents, we know we're going to have at least 100 new housing units built before anything else there. What, what will that look like in terms of ordinances and, and requirements for noise?
So I, I don't know the specific answer about whether or not a, a heavy metal concert would violate our noise ordinance, but I assume that it would at 10 o'clock. And I think really the open space board recommendation, which is concern about amplified music, hours of operation, outdoor lighting, ball field lighting. It's a concern about impacts the open space, but it's very similar to what some of the neighbors have concerns about. And so it, it, there's very much overlap, overlapping concerns there. And so I, I do want to just say that it is, how to apply the noise ordinance is in the queue for the negotiation discussion. And so if there were, even, it doesn't have to be technical or specific, but like what sounds acceptable and reasonable and what doesn't would be helpful tonight. And we can translate that into decimal readings and stuff in those discussions.
Thanks. And, and I think one place to start may just be what, what's in our code? And is that directly pertinent to an outdoor venue on, on a campus? And at, at various hours. And then also just to, to add from the neighborhood perspective, there's, there's discussion of, of these being NCAA certified fields and things. And I, I will say that it has been appealing to me at CU South that there would be fields available for recreation for people who live nearby and community members. And the way that the tennis courts are structured there, which I believe are NCAA compliant, those are not open. Like I can't go play tennis on the CU South tennis court right now. And so I'm hoping that whatever is put there or most of what is put there as rec fields are public amenities and not like gated off. And then one, it's just agree, I, I like the idea of having the parking principles put in the agreement because I could see if, if we don't do that, you may get overflow at the Table Mesa Park and Ride and things like that, that we don't anticipate. So there does need to be adequate parking, I think conceived of for onsite and, and not overlooked. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Rachel. Erin?
Am I okay to go with comments?
Yeah, both questions and comments here.
Great. I'll, I'll just leave writing comments. I've gotten all my questions answered. Thanks for, for the information. Well, I'll just say that, that the 3,000 attendees does seem like a large number for a sports facility. To me, that feels like a, a large sports facility. So I'd, I'd encourage us to see if we can't work that number down. I don't, I don't know what the magic number is, but maybe it's more like, I don't know, 1,500 or something. I'm, I'm not an expert in sports fields, but I, you are, we are noticing it already in input from, from the public. There, people are talking about the proposed 3,000 seat sporting field, which of course is not what's, there's nothing specific proposed, but it would be allowed under that proposed number. So I encourage us to, to limit that. I do, I appreciate some of the, the buffer and limited impact zones ideas that you put in there. Those I thought were creative and well designed. I'm glad to see those moving forward. I had a, had a meeting with somebody who lived up in, in those, one of those neighborhoods a few months ago, who had some suggestions about ways they could mitigate impacts on their neighborhood. And you've done them all already in, in this proposed agreement. So that's, that's great to see. Just some thoughts on the, the residential versus non-residential that may, maybe we do go with a ratio. I mean, I think our community has a really desperate need for additional housing in, 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 in town. So I would, we do really want to see it tilt in that direction. So maybe we can set, are you all hearing me? Okay, great.
I can hear you.
You know, so maybe we, we tilt it to some, maybe to three to one or four to one ratio. I don't know what's acceptable, but I, I think we want more than, you know, you know, 1.1 to one for housing versus non-residential. So whatever kind of numbers we can get the university to agree to. And then in terms of staging, maybe there's, say that, well, you generally have to follow that ratio all the way through site development, but you get a, a 15 or 20% wiggle room for up to a couple of years, you know? Like if you, if you need to develop one major non-residential building, it's going to put you over the, the cap. You could be that way for a little while as long as you brought it back by the, the time of the eventual completion. You know, you could have some, some formulas with some allowances, maybe either a percentage on either side or a timeframe or both, so that, that they could still practically come to implement a set of development plans. So those are my thoughts. I think you're, you're, you're going in good directions here. So I appreciate the collaborative work. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Mary, your hand's still up?
It's up again.
Good.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, comments. I agree with everything that Erin just said. And especially the, the ratio portion of it. It'll be tricky with allowing non-residential to leapfrog over the housing because non-residential generally would yield more need for housing. So then you get out of balance again, as well as yield more need, more need for parking and all of that stuff. So, so it has to be done in consideration of all the other ratios. So with respect to the sports field, I agree with Erin there too. That 3,000 is too high. And to say that, that sports field, a smaller number of potential size would not have any lighting, need for lighting. So that would necessarily limit it to day use. So to consider those things so that there is no potential for an evening concert or loud game or, or, or lighting that is going to upset folks and, and wildlife and things like that. So yeah, so the consideration of no lighting and therefore, therefore defaulting into day use only. And that's all I have.
Great. Thanks, Mary. I don't know the answer to this question, so I'm not asking for an answer tonight, but I think it, for us to wrap our heads around, it would be interesting to know what the seating is at the Fairview Stadium, as well as at the Boulder High School Stadium, just so that we can, you know, get some kind of scale. Potts Field isn't probably a good one because not lots of people go by it. And I don't remember many big sporting events there. So anyway, I will try and dig in. I haven't been able to find it. But what the seating is at Fairview and Boulder High would be a, just a reference for us to have. I agree with everything Erin said. So most important that the focus here be residential. Because I think that's the way that the, the development was conceived and talked about for the longest time. And it is very appealing to have residential, much less appealing to have academic and non-residential space. So I think there are two parts to it. I find the idea of 100 dwelling units before you can begin building non-residential not to be substantial enough. You know, I would want to be thinking more in the line of 250 or 300 dwelling units, just as a starting point. Because 100 dwelling units, I can't imagine what non-commercial building you're going to put up there of any significance that you're going to have less than 100 dwelling units needed for it. So anyway, I would, I would say 100 seems small. The ratio is important, as Erin said. And I think the focus really does need to be clear in the annexation agreement that we want residential first and predominantly. And then on the field, I think Mary's idea is one well worth considering of not having lighting at all. Or if we do have lighting on a field, that that be the furthest away from residences, both on the site as well as off the site. So I think that's all I've got on this. I, I think, I want to reemphasize what Mark said, that the height ceiling concept was a really important, I think, breakthrough of a way to conceive of this. And it really does limit the more intense parts of the development to be out of the floodplain, but not adjacent to the existing residential neighborhoods that are there. So I think that's all I've got. And Junie, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I agree with everything that's been said. That housing is very important and it should be the primary focus. I just wanted to just make a comment about the lighting that I heard earlier. And I think as a woman, thinking about safe space for women, I think lighting is something that is very important, especially at nighttime. So I think that's something that we have to consider, or at least ensure that if we do it, we do it in a way that is, that protects the safety of women and other people who, who are impacted by, you know, feeling unsafe at, or at nighttime.
Great. Thank you. Anything else, Junie? That's it. Okay. Very good. I think that's all for this section, Phil.
Yep. And I, what I'd like to do is maybe just combine the next two and we can hit them since they're kind of related. Emily, if you could get us to the next slide, it was number 24. The next area is the Park Urban Other area. And so this is 60 acres of the site. The actual footprint of it is the old flood, floodplain, flood mitigation footprint, which was known at the time as option D. The, what you're seeing here is just the city's flood mitigation project that was accepted by council last July. That includes both the area of inundation excavation and, and also the area of fill. The area of fill being outside the floodplain right now, and it would be raised to a level that would be protected by the 500 year floodplain. And that's within the public area that we just discussed. Emily, if you could press next once, please. So in this area, we would recommend that it primarily be used to prioritize the construction of the city's flood mitigation project. And secondarily, we're also exploring areas for recreation fields. The university has a stated interest in 30 acres or so of recreational fields. And it's not specific to citing them, but really reserving the land to use it later and design them through a planning process. So what we've been able to look at is really outside that excavation area being about roughly 15 acres or so. And again, these are kind of rough numbers with this particular map. And so there would be a balance that would have to be made up. And what's proposed by the university, which is a point of disagreement between the two staffs, is to locate 10 acres on, in that open space other area. And so this is an active part of the negotiation. It's something we're working through. And we're trying to look at other areas, even areas in that excavation area that would be appropriate for recreational fields. If through our engineers and other staff were able to, to find room, adequate room for the university, we could, we could solve that particular point of disagreement. But more discussion is needed. We're also in some discussions around a publicly available track. So we're, whatever's built there, it would include something like that. And that's something that we're discussing. And we're also, we've heard a lot, obviously it's a, a lot of dog walking there. And so we've talked about having a publicly accessible dog park. And so those are under discussion right now too. Emily, if you could go to the next one and then hit next again, please. So that, that's a, might be a quicker conversation. There might be some other air, um, questions. We have Joe Tatiucci with our utilities division here for any of the questions around flood mitigation. But I thought that we could probably also go through open space as well. And so this is 129 acres of the site. It's designated open space other. And so this is a, a land use designation that indicates land in, in our comprehensive plan in the Boulder Valley that the city and county would like to preserve through various means and methods. The open space other in this case is really split kind of in half by a existing levee system. And so when you hear us say inside and outside the levee, outside the levee is to the south and east, adjacent to city open space, and that's 44 acres. And then inside the levee is 75 acres. So as part of the annexation proposal, the university is offering 80 acres of land to the city at no cost for the flood mitigation project. What's not needed for the flood mitigation project can then be kind of applied to this open space area for city open space. And so right now we think we'll need 25 to 35, 36 acres of land for the city's flood mitigation needs. And the balance of that 80 acres then would be 44 acres in this area that the city would receive at no cost for open space. Under that scenario, then we have the 75 acres left that are kind of in play in the negotiation. And so we do have a recommendation from the Open Space Board of Trustees that recommends that the entire 119 acres be, be conveyed to the city as part of a comprehensive environmental mitigation plan. And that does include also the water rights for Dry Creek Ditch Number Two that runs through the site. And city staff and the board also really sees that as being critical to restoring the area and the vision for that. So overall, what the, the staff's vision for this area is that while, while the city would hold title to the land, we would develop a partnership with CU for a comprehensive mitigation plan. So in practice, this area would be restored and enhanced to offset impacts from the flood mitigation project and CU's future development. Part of that vision does also include removing that existing levee, which is something the city wants to do to reconnect the floodplain and the adjacent high quality open space that the city owns adjacent to the site. So around all of those, we are now moving into the point of, of, of discussing those with the university. And again, working to resolve the issue of acres of rec fields in, in this area. There's also some interest from this university around solar or community gardens and solar installation that we are working through. Let's see, the only other points I think we need to hit on here is that the roughly, the boundary of this open space area is roughly the 500 year floodplain. And we've agreed through the guiding principles that no structure, enclosed structure will be built in the 100 or the 500 year floodplain. The open space board and their recommendation, we sent meeting summaries of the planning board and the transportation advisory board and the open space board, or meeting summaries of those meetings and the open space board recommendation to council yesterday via email. But as I mentioned earlier, there was a lot of comments around view shed protection. So with removing the levee, there will be some vegetation that'll be removed. And so the board has interest in us working into the agreement, some screening requirements for development on the site, particularly to protect the view shed at, from the east, from open space that city owned, the city owned open space. There's also a lot of interest in minimizing light and noise pollution with the particular comments around the city ordinances may not be sufficient to mitigate those impacts successfully. And so that's something that we are going to be talking about. And then ensuring that any trail connections follow a standard city process. We think that the community's input that we've heard so far around open space is support for keeping the existing natural character of the area and, and certainly support for enhanced and additional environmental protections. The planning board supported also staff and the Open Space Board of Trustees recommendation. And they also noted that we should consider a specific term that we will collaborate with the university on some research and learning opportunities in this area. So it could kind of be a living lab in, in, in some form or fashion. Emily, if you go to the next slide, this is the last slide of the, the slide deck for tonight. The open space board last week did make just a minor tweak to one of their rec The Open Space Board last week did um make just a minor tweak to one of their rec recommendations. It's underlined here. Um, we do have members from Open Space staff here with us today. Um, and um Emily, you could probably stop sharing the screen now. And we could break for questions and input um on both the Parker Urban Other area and the open space area, and that would conclude the the meeting.
Super, um, council questions on Parker Urban Other, which I think we're thinking lots of fields there or open space? Questions or comments? Great. Well, uh, there we go. Mark and then Aaron. Mark?
Um, I I guess I would want to discuss the elephant in the room, which is um, there's widespread dissatisfaction with the concept of um Boulder paying for fill to be placed on property to be used by CU. Has that conversation changed at all? Um, because I see it, it's not part of.
Mark, could could I suggest, I was gonna bring us to that, the the question of cost um after this, so if we could do Parker Urban Other and open space, I I I have a bookmark myself to bring that up, and I'll call on you first.
I will defer.
Okay, um, Aaron and Rachel.
Yeah, so um appreciate your uh negotiations on figuring out the the rooms for those recreational fields and uh if there is room for them in the Parker Urban Other space and the maybe even an excavation space, great. Um, and while, but while I appreciate the Open Space Board's recommendation um to to put nothing in the O S O area. My understanding of the guiding principles uh has some allowance for the possibility of recreation fields within the O S O areas, providing that they are in areas that are of kind of lowest ecological quality and with and restoration uh possibility. So I I just want to make sure that we keep that on the table, that if if you know, if it fits, great, but if it doesn't, if you need five or ten acres on the edge of O S O and places that are not suitable uh for restoration, I think that would be worth considering. Um.
Hey, I had one comment about that, because I, it's a really good point, Aaron. Um. So the continuum of of the timeline for this is that when we did the guiding principles, there was an expectation that the flood wall along US thirty-six would be completely in the C dot right of way. And then we adopted the guiding principles, and then we find out we actually had to move it on to open space, and I think it's that that triggered probably additional um uh needs from the Open Space Board to to be firm on it, and I think that's, and I'm not it's ultimately, it's council's decision, but I just wanted to provide the context. I think that's where they're coming from.
I I I'm aware of that, Phil. I appreciate the comment, but I I understand where their concerns are coming from, but I I do think that the 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 guiding principles were written that way, as I recall with the with the idea that that there are areas of that O S O area that are less ecologically sensitive and that a relatively low-impact recreational field would not be incompatible with that. So I'm just gonna disagree a little bit with the Open Space Board's recommendation in that area. Um, uh, I mean, if we don't need to, fantastic, you know, it's not, don't rush there, but I I just don't, I don't want to break the deal because of because of that. Um, and then also um appreciate their advocacy for getting um the entire O S O uh area granted to the city along with the water rights. And if we're able to accomplish that, fantastic. Um, but you, you know, see how that goes. I it's, I don't think it's in the university's office offer currently. Um, if we can trade for other things, fantastic, but I I would not walk away if we're not granted that request.
Thanks, Aaron. Rachel.
I think this maybe is a question for um Open Space Staff or Parks and Rec, if anybody's on the on the call. Um, you know, I I use CU South a lot. Um, and and it is a very convenient place to walk dogs in a loop that's flat, like for for people that want to walk, that is, um, you know. I don't know, maybe you have knee issues, or you just want to flatwalk or whatever. It's, it's a great spot in um in our region that is safe to have dogs off leash, and they're, you know, they're not gonna run into traffic. So just wondering, when we connect open space with the other available open space, and and it's great that there may be a dog park at CU South in the in the future um incarnation as well, but it that won't quite have the same feel as like, you know, you getting a a good um exercise loop in yourself. So is there any thought to maybe recreating some of what's there now as as potential when we um convert it to Boulder Open Space? Understanding that um it it, you know, it's not currently open space, but we do appreciate it it as sort of used as such right now in the neighborhood. Hi, Dan.
Hi, uh, Dan Burke, Director, Open Space Mountain Parks. Uh, John Potter's uh on standby, too, so he might want to chime in on this, but uh a couple of things, uh, uh, Rachel on that. It's first, I'll just go back to the board motion um uh that they passed in March. They did make a uh provide a feedback statement in regards to trails, uh, future trails, and it was basically saying it would be uh um uh to plan for what the trail system would be on the CU property um would have to uh uh take in context um how it may or may not affect open space. So in essence, it would be very difficult to to uh plan just a trail system on this CU South property if it ended on open space without then going into a trail planning process for the open space land. So the board was making a recommendation that when it comes to trails, uh especially trails that either would go on O S O, which would be conveyed over to the city, or that would end at open space lands, that uh the the typical planning process that the city uses, plan open space trails, would be utilized. And that's a pretty robust property, which would uh get stakeholder feedback, community feedback, board and council feedback. And so that we uh in essence, that we wouldn't design isolated trail systems, but what we would use a robust public process uh in order to look at trail design.
Okay, and and would, you know, right now you can park at CU South and and, you know, take dogs. Some some people uh arrive with like nine dogs that hop out of their trunk right now at CU South. So would the vision be that we would, the public would use CU South's parking, or or like, I guess, have we given much thought to sort of from our side as open space, once we get these acres, what it might look like to try and and have some level of of community access that's that's akin to to what we have now um for people who live in that region?
Yeah, we fully anticipate that uh public recreational use of any land that would become open space is is definitely going to be deserving of a very robust discussion. I would also say that the restoration of the land is also gonna have to come into play because uh right now we're contemplating reconnecting the floodplain, which would be a a really robust restoration project. So the timing for recreational trails uh in terms of the uh uh the restoration project, too, and how those overlaps would also have to come into consideration. So uh I would suggest that, yes, it's definitely on our minds, um, but that uh that would be a a pretty much a a a public planning process in and of itself. Um, once we get more details of what is gonna be conveyed to us and 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 what the timing of the restoration project is and look like, what's the phasing of the restoration project? And how trails and recreational use fit into that overall uh picture?
All right. Thanks, Ian. Hi, John.
Okay, great. Um, Aaron, I assume that's a leftover hand. Is that correct? Great. So on on these subjects, um, the fields, I think it would be super great to not have any fields on O S O, and I think it's super great uh enough that we should make that a is something that we definitely work towards. Um, the the other reason that I have that in mind is if we are going to use O S O inside the levee as a mitigation bank, which can be used to mitigate some of the development on the other parts of the CU property that do have ponds and wetlands on them now. I think that we want to have as much of that available as possible, so not only CU's development gets mitigated, but we do as much as we can to restore the values that were there before it was a gravel pit. So I think it's well worth trying to get as much of that O S O land to be preserved, not only for um the values that we want for our open space, but also because it can be used to mitigate some of the land that will be developed as well. So I think there's a double upside to being able to get all the O S O into preservation. So I agree there, and we don't want it to be a deal breaker, but I think it should be a strong area of emphasis that if we can, we want to do that. Um, so that's what I've got on O S O. You've already heard about um thoughts on fields um that could go and park urban other. I'm very interested in knowing the excavation area. You know, I don't know how we are gonna terrace that, what that's gonna look like, but it certainly seems like um, I know that part of the excavation area, we're thinking we can put fields in, but to the extent that we can maximize that in some terrorist way, I think that that would be good. I can even imagine, not to get too far ahead of ourselves, that you could have what's in the excavation area be more rec fields, and then if you're gonna have inter mural or things where there will be standing or seated um but not bleacher spectators, that that could be up and out and places that 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 get flooded less than what's in the excavation area. So I think that's all I've got on those subjects that were right in front of us. Adam, what have you got?
Process question. Um, there's some additional slides about some interesting topics. I was just wondering if we're gonna go through those as well that were listed under uh uh, I forget what it's listed under, but it's like the fire station and stuff. Just wanted to see if we were actually gonna cover those, or if we needed to ask a question or bring those up.
Um, yeah, we included, uh, sometimes we just throw a bunch of slides as backup slides in case we had to refer to something, and so we can do that if needed. My screen sharing hasn't been hundred percent today, so you can get it up.
So Adam, I was gonna go to costs next, and then we can go to anything else. We did touch on the fire station, but if we want to go more there, I think that's totally appropriate. So um do you have anything on the the fields or or S or? Okay. So why do we do this if it's okay with council? Um, I would say that cost is an area that I I think is big enough that we need to touch on it explicitly and at least make our feelings known to staff and CU about that. And then uh I would say anything else is a catch-all that we didn't touch on. So um, are we good with going to cost? And and Phil, are you okay with us going into costs and then other things? Okay. Um, so I think um we'll make sure and circle back, Adam, to to go into anything else that you want to. Cost, um, Mark brought this up, so I think I'll just turn to Mark, and Mark, why don't you tee us up and and give us your thoughts on that, and other council members can react.
There there are a couple of areas with respect to costs. Um, one of course is is the um the the cost of the project itself, which um I would contend is is probably not the most accurate, given where we are in the in the conversation. Um, the second is with respect to uh the payment um or bearing the cost of fill for CU. Now, I had understood uh that it was the recommendation that we take down the berm. And if we're taking down the berm and CU would like that fill, uh if it is applicable to their needs, I would we either have to do uh dispose of it somewhere else, uh we might as well uh provide it to them. Um, but I think there's a lot of sensitivity in the community um to the concept that we would be paying to raise the level of a portion of the property um to get it out of the floodplain. And 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 I had also um thought of the concept of um should cost at any point be a contingency for completion of the transaction? Um, and I'm not talking about if if the costs are, you know, fifteen or twenty percent higher, but if it turns out that they are um very, very substantially higher, um uh, we either have to take the position that cost is not a factor, and we will raise the utility rates to whatever is needed to pay for the project. Or if there's a level at which cost becomes a limiting factor for us, should we build that in as a sort of a de-annexation um possibility? Um, and again, if it's the will of council that that this project, and it's reasonable to say this, this project is so important that whatever the final numbers come in at, we don't care. Uh, we must proceed, then that's the way we should go. But if there is a level of expense that goes beyond what we could reasonably bear, even through the bonding process through utilities, um, we ought to figure that out and and build that into the process. Those are my cost comments uh so far.
Okay, very good. Any other council members? Run away in costs. Mirabai.
Thanks, Ian. Sorry, I was trying to get my hand raised up. Um, yeah, I I guess I'll just kind of jump in with Mark and and throw my hat in the ring on this. I and I guess I'll extend it to further stating that I I'm more, uh, not only am I concerned about the costs, but I'm also concerned about the environmental impacts of the amount of trucked travel and loads that this is going to be um to carry all this dirt back and forth, and we've heard a lot of this from the residents, so I'm I'm mainly raising this from the residential standpoint of how much work, uh, pollution and costs this is going to cost the city. So again, I'm still, I understand that it's an off point from from where we're at and that we've done a lot of work, but still keeping on the table that there's planning reserves that we could have switched this to that would be out of the floodplain and better situated to handle a project that's not even planned yet. Um, and by the time it is planned, that planning reserve would be ready to handle it. So just throwing that out there, um, as a relatively large concern when we talk about trying to mitigate our greenhouse gas um impact to to the city and the planet.
Thank you, Mirabai. Um, I guess I'll weigh in and say, I think costs are a big deal. Um, I I think the fill cost is definitely one that we're going to want to both pay attention to and monitor. I think there are options that we will want to return to as council and talk about and think about. Um, I would say that I I know that we've got some preliminary work on this, but we have talked about filling um to protect against five-hundred-year um flood, which i- is consistent with the guiding principles. Um, however, that's not regulatory, so we are opting to do that. So we need to probably understand the difference between a hundred-year and five-hundred-year um fill requirements and look at what that difference is when we're getting down to brass tacks. Um, I think in addition to fill, there's all the other components. There's pilot, there's impact fees that are not being charged. There's construction use tax. So I think there's actually a long list of items that fall under cost. I don't think we're prepared yet to talk about them, because I don't know that there's um been much more than just listing them and knowing them and and estimating what those are. But I think this will be a key conversational point, because not only is there the question of what are the costs and what's the appropriate um trade-offs between the city and the university, there's also the legality of the costs, and there's what might be um paid, if anything, from the open space fund for open spaceland. And then there's what it will end up adding to people's water and flood bills as well. So I I don't think we have the information yet to be able to have a robust conversation about it. I'll just flag that it's uh gonna be one of the most critical items. So as we get those developed, um, we might think about a study session where we focus on those later, once we've got a a lot more clarity on on some of the other issues, because to be quite frank, some of the other um decisions we make will drive costs. So I don't want to gloss over it. Um, but I don't think we have enough information to do a deep dive tonight, but I think we can't lose track of it. Um, Mirabai's point about trucking and all the work and uh emissions that go along with trucking fill and point to Mark's question, which is if we take the berm down, who pays for that? And if we do remove the berm, which I think we all agree is something that we want to do, how much does that mitigate the fill trucking requirements? So that's another component. So a lot comes down to berm, fill, those are part of the drivers for costs, but I think we're gonna need to um definitely return to this and return to it within the next six to eight weeks. Um, because we can't let this one lie too long um to get to the end. So that's all I've got to say about costs, but we have a lot of hands now. Aaron.
Can I call away on just one of your points real quick, Ian, which is just to make sure that we're all um following? Can I colloquy I just one of your points real quick, Sam, which just to make sure that we're all um following along. You mentioned um. The one hundred versus five hundred year fill requirement and the guiding principles, I think, require us to fill to five hundred year. And to kind of, you know, bring their level up to um being outside the five hundred year floodplain um for their buildings. And so my question is, if we wanted to look at allowing C U to build in the hundred year. Um, floodplain, which is essentially the protection that residents are getting. Um, in the city and it's a cost that we would bear to go up from one hundred to five hundred. So we have heard a lot from community members about that. What would that look like, given that I think it's in the guiding principles? Um, would that require? For body review to undo that? Is that something that if we even wanted to think about, we would need to? Um, take action on sooner than later? Or is that just a normal point of of uh negotiations?
I want to clarify one thing and then turn to Tom. When you say build in the one hundred year floodplain, I I don't think you quite mean that. You mean. Raise enough fill that you're just out of the hundred.
Above between the one hundred, below five hundred, but above one hundred. Yeah.
Right. And then Tom, we have guiding principles. If we wanted to. Make an annexation deal that did not adhere a hundred percent to the guiding principles, but made some changes in the annexation. Would we have to change the comp plan guiding principles in order to make that annexation?
I'd have to think about that, Sam. It's really not my area and I didn't work on this. You guiding principles generally are advisory, but Phil, do you have a thought?
That that's my thought, too. If we had to change them, the chapter in the comp plan that they're located in is a city decision. So the planning board and council could. Uh, make that decision. Um, but they are guiding and so and we we are consulting with our county colleagues and they'll have a referral as well, but yeah.
Great. And I'll just say, Rachel, one other thought around that as we have that conversation. Could also be the types of facilities that are there. So, you know, if they're critical facilities. You might say in if we're going to build between above the hundred but below the five hundred. You might also be able to talk about what kinds of facilities could be there. So just a thought. Aaron, Rachel, Mary and Adam. Aaron?
I'll start by continuing the colloquy on on this issue. Um, because I think it's a good point. And Rachel, to put a a a fine point, I don't think the principle was that we would elevate all of their buildable land. To the five hundred year, but that they would not build any enclosed structures within the five hundred year floodplain. It's just a little different. Um, but also my when when we pass those guiding principles, my understanding of the intention was that. Uh, C U would not build any enclosed structures on the existing five hundred year floodplain or one hundred year floodplain was. How I sort of understood. It's not how it's written, but I understood that to be the intention. Um, rather than that, uh, when the mitigation project was constructed, that we would have to elevate any. Land to the five hundred, out of the five hundred year level um that was put into it by the excavation project. So I I think it's worth looking at. I mean, if we could, I don't know how much it varies the cost, but if they could be. Uh, their their area were in the five hundred year, but not the one hundred year, and it saved eight million dollars in filter. That's worth looking at. So I I think it bears investigation for sure. Um, Sam, I thought you were all all on target with all your comments, uh so I won't repeat any of those. Uh, the costs are going to be critical, obviously. You know, Mark had a great point of if we uh take down the levy, can we use that dirt and mitigate some costs that way? You know, that's really worth looking into. Um, although I would not go to the point of putting in a de-annexation clause if we think the project ends up being too expensive. It's a kind of a subjective or, you know, the financial requirements or may change over time. So I don't know what that magic number would be. Um, so I wouldn't wouldn't do that contingent, but we got to keep a very careful eye on that. I I just wanted to to come back to uh uh something from open comment. If the person um is still around some, one member of the public was asking. Uh, why, what's so special about the people in this floodplain? And why are we spending a bunch of money uh here and not other places? Just to be clear, we spend a lot of money on a regular basis on flood mitigation all across the city and and. Sue staff can back me up here if I get anything wrong or correct me, but like we we finished the Wonderland Creek project on the last ten, four years. In North Boulder, there there was the Goose Creek mitigation project uh before that, a little bit further south of that. All of these are many multi-million dollars uh projects. They don't protect as many people, but they cost the less. Anyway, we just the point being that that we spend a lot of money on flood mitigation all over the city on a regular basis. Um, and so this is, you know, this has taken. Depending on how you count it, twenty years to to get to this point and planning for this project. Now we're at this project. We're going to spend, if it all works out, a bunch of money on this one in a few years. We'll start another one in another part of the city and spend a bunch of money on that. So. Joe, is that a fair, I see pop up on the video, is that a fair characterization of of how we approach this?
Yeah, that that is a fair characterization and and good evening, council. I'm Joe Tadiucci, uh Utilities Director. And um. Yes, the the South Boulder Creek project would uh benefit the twenty three hundred people, as mentioned in in open comment. But really, the the flood fees go to the flood protection and it's also the the stormwater, which are two. Two distinct things, the pipes that are underground that convey water. And really, the community members benefit from the the systems that we have in place and that we're building all across town. It's it's not just. Does it protect your your neighborhood or or an adjacent neighborhood as you drive around bringing people to school or? Or shopping or that kind of thing. We we all sort of benefit from the collective. Components of our flood and stormwater system. So I think that's an important point to consider as well as we're thinking about. The fees we pay and the rate structures and things like that.
I appreciate that. And just the last thing while I I have the floor, just just to remind everybody, we we get a lot. We're getting a lot of emails right now saying like. Why are you doing this? Why would you consider doing this? And fundamentally, we're all in it for flood mitigation for our residents. It's those. Protecting those twenty three hundred people's uh health and safety and and property. So. That's why we're here. That's why we do o- other flood mitigation projects around town. Um, it's it's all about protecting the the life safety of our residents. And that's why we're talking about annexation here tonight.
And and Aaron, I'd like to colloquy a bit, just a teeny bit, and ask a question of Joe. Joe, we saw some pictures of Bear Creek, you know, the bike path flooding and so on. I believe that that's the way that those um locations are designed, right, to convey the floodwater. A way that comes out of, in that case, Bear Creek, but all along Goose Creek and Boulder Creek. Um, could you talk a little bit about, you know, how we design those greenways to help convey water? And so. I guess the question is, in the pictures you saw, Bear Creek. Is that functioning the way it's supposed to?
The the short answer is is yes, it's functioning the way it's supposed to. And I believe the the greenway system that we have. Uh, is something that uh council had a big part of back in the mid eighties, I believe, in in establishing. Our flood and drainage ways and. There's definitely a fundamental purpose to those systems of conveying floodwater, but we have multi-use paths in them. We have environmental habitat. Um, recreation opportunities and all those things. And in in normal weather conditions, uh the community gets to to enjoy all of those different benefits, but. Uh, when we get into a a major flooding situation, their their purpose is to convey that floodwater and some. Some level of flooding, when you see uh the multi-use use paths underwater. That that's an expected condition in in a major flooding situation.
And and so is it fair to say that there has been some um flood mitigation effort and money spent in the South Boulder area?
There there has been all across town and and I I have some backup slides. And I think at this point in the meeting, you're probably not wanting to go into a lot of detail, but there's there's a whole uh life cycle. That we do in our flood planning and we talked about it in April of twenty twenty in a council study session. There there is a a mapping part of the process. There is a a flood mitigation part where we look at the design alternatives that are available for the specific drainages. And then there's the actual design and construction of projects. And uh there there's a a series of slides I have in the backup that goes through all of that, but. Uh, and staff has put that together going back to two thousand and four. We have made progress on on all of those fronts and a couple of the significant ones in recent years are the Elmers Two Mile. And the um Wonderland Creek, which were designed to a level of a hundred year flood protection. The Wonderland Creek project was a twenty million dollar uh project. And uh Elmers Two Mile, I believe, was was nine million. So those are some of the recent ones and. If if you travel around town on the multi-use path, there there there's a big portion of the Goose Creek path that's been developed in the past. So. We we are making progress on these on these planning studies and the implementation of. Project, but there's still a long way to go all across the city.
Thank you, Joe. Um, Rachel, Mary and Adam. Rachel?
Joe, while you're there, good evening. Um, it's really interesting about like uh. The multi-use path could look catastrophically flooded and yet is functioning as designed. I I hadn't known that. So that's really. Um, an interesting point, but I I do, I'm obviously very sympathetic to people's concern that that they um need need better. Flood control in their region um or part of town. And I think that we are that. That we started a community work group with flood mitigation efforts. I'm just wondering if if maybe you can share for people who are still watching and have those concerns like where they could plug in. Or get involved or get information that might be helpful for the long term planning.
Yeah, thank you for reminding me of that. And right now in our um in our utilities department, one of our priorities in our work plan. Um, is updating our comprehensive flood and stormwater master plan. And uh we're we're working on that and planning on uh getting that finalized um in twenty twenty two, I believe. And we formed a a community working group and a big effort, uh a big goal of that plan. It's an overarching master plan for that utility is to. Reestablish how we prioritize projects across the city. And historically, on 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 these types of master planning efforts. Yeah, you look at the benefit cost ratio, how how many structures and and what costs are they that are being protected and what is the cost of the? Of the construction of a of whatever project you might be looking at. And that that has been kind of the the central point of of planning those things historically. But um the our thinking has evolved really as a society and the the equity and racial equity and and like. If you do it just purely on benefit cost, then um the the higher damage occurs in the more affluent neighborhoods. And so there's. There's just different lenses that we're looking through and we're having conversations with a community working group. Those people are going to go out as part of the process and talk to their neighbors and. Uh, we should have some good feedback to bring back. And and that council or that plan will eventually be in front of council for review and consideration.
That's that's awesome that um they will be applying that lens. It's it's long been a concern of mine on this project that there's. So much affordable housing right on the front lines of the flooding here. So um that that's just good that that's going to be a lens. Um, so. I I had one question for Tom and then also just wanted to speak to Mark's concern about. You know, if the cost gets too high, do we consider that a de-annexation? Trigger and I I mean, I I get it, like, we don't want to. Annexes property and then not get flood mitigation. Like, that's why we're looking at de-annexation. Um, but I do think it would be hard to build that in and I think it would be um. Something like if it if the cost was too high from C U's side to build housing, like we would not expect them to take away flood mitigation. Like, I would hope that. At the end of the day, if we have a a, you know, approximately half of the property given to us as open space. Um, and then affordable housing and a lot of it and and still get the benefits that we could. Hopefully find another flood mitigation um strategy that would work there or something. It just, it would feel like. A a bit of a a slippery slope if we gave ourselves in a future council um. Be out to say, well, if it goes up by a penny or a percent or whatever, that we can undo it. So I'd just be concerned about. Um, people manipulating that feature from kind of within. And then my question for Tom is um, somebody raised the question of, you know, are, is it legal? Like, is our cost structure legal? And I just didn't know if you could speak to that or if that's a question mark.
So I'm I'm not sure I understand what you mean by cost structure.
Well, somebody I think raised, um, you know, how maybe how we're going to do the um the rates of flood mitigation and I I'm not sure what there. It was it was maybe Sam. I don't.
It was me. It was me and I was just pointing out that, you know, open space expenditure going into flood rates is questionable. So. I mean, there's just some open questions I think we need to be clear on. I'm not sure that I I feel like we're running afoul of anything, but I just think. It's just a question.
Yeah, and we'll have to keep an eye on that as you go forward.
Okay, so it's not, there's not, there's not like a huge question mark that that gives us great pause, just something that we need to design around. Is that? Or 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 be.
I've not. Not seen something that gives us great pause uh it it. You use flood mitigation dollars for flood mitigation and we'll have to make sure that we account for it and aren't using it for the wrong thing. But that that's down the road as you get further towards the the actual plan.
Okay, and and just to clarify, um, if we can't use flood mitigation dollars for open space, we can use open space dollars for open space. Purposes in in conjunction with this, I assume.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Rachel, can I colloquy with you on a one point? My comment on sort of a cost contingency was not based on whether the forty million. Becomes fifty or sixty, but would you have any qualms if the forty million became ninety five or a hundred and twenty? I wouldn't expect it, but I I get I'm it it to me, it's not the principle, it's the price.
May I colloquy back?
Yes, you may.
So, yeah, I I do think that that it's a proper consideration, like at some point, it's it's too much money, right? And so to me, the question then is. How do you um change the mitigation strategy to be workable still to protect lives? Because it is a a health and safety question and this is why we're doing it. Um, so I I my concern is just coupling it with de-annexation, not saying at some point it's too high of a cost, but I think that. Um, I just don't know that that that's one that I would run with the de-annexation.
No, I I understand. I I I guess the the implicit part of what you're saying is that there's some sort of. Value engineering that we can do with respect to the flood mitigation project. If we found that it was unreasonably high, I don't know whether that's. True or not, but I would certainly, you know, want to do that if it if it became a number that was really just unsupportable. You know, by increases in our utility rates.
Yeah, I mean, I I think that the whole thing is sort of a balancing act, right? That's why we get went from five hundred down to one hundred is because five hundred became. Too expensive. So I I would think that we would have to, yeah, if 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 costs spiraled, I would look to Joe. That's that's my thought, but.
Okay, that's fair.
I might want to comment on that. Uh, definitely the the costs have uh elevated over the years that we've been. Planning and looking at design of this project and and really some of the things like the the fill. And the road and the tennis courts and and those things should have been in our cost estimates when we were talking about this. Uh, in previous iterations of this study, because those are real costs. Right now, the university has a hundred and twenty nine acres that is not in the in the floodplain, the pub land. But when we build the the flood wall and the detention facility, it's going to change the floodplain. And so the 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 reason for the fill is is to kind of make them whole again, back to that hundred and twenty nine acres. I realize that that has been a real point of contention for the community. And it has been an area of focus in our staff to staff conversations with the university. We're we're exploring every option and looking for creative solutions. I I don't know if there's a silver bullet option to deal with the. The fill and the costs, but. Uh, we're in discussions on on that as as we speak. The other thing I would say is uh in this latest iteration of the cost estimate. I would never say never that it can't go up, but we have tried to err on the conservative conservatively high side. And um we have talked internally uh among our utility staff. If it starts going up uh much more from here, then I think we would we would come back to council and and there's a point where we would say we're. Really starting to have some concerns with this fitting into our future funding. Right now, at the cost that we have, uh, we can fit this into our our plan and our bonding capacity. And there's so much planning in process with all these projects that. that it's going to take time to develop other projects. And so we have a workable financial plan right now. But if it if it doubles, as as Mark says, or 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 gets in the hundred million range, then I think we'd have to come back and have a serious conversation.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Rachel. Mary, and then Adam. Mary?
Thanks, Sam. First question is about the role of the Mile High Flood District in the payment or or coverage of the costs for this project. How what role do they they play and how does that work into our plans?
So the the Mile High Flood District is is partnering with us on this project. We they they provide funding for a number of agencies in our area. And we make requests for their funding for specific projects. And they evaluate that and then and they make grants for us to use use those funds. And there's there's a few million dollars that are allocated for this project right now. So a- and they're also, in addition to providing the funding, they have a staff lead that is assigned to this project. And they work with our engineering project manager and are involved in in some of the agency discussions and in in meetings with us and helping helping us partnering with us on and some of the other agencies on those things. So they are definitely involved in this.
And so that that money to pay for this project has already been allocated?
It 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 is in the annual budgets. It's in our in our process. I don't remember the years and how much is allocated, but some of it, I think they have already applied some funding. I'd have to get back to you on the specifics of what years and and when.
Yeah, because as I recall, what they do is they they bank it up, you know, a little bit every year, targeting that year in which it happens to have the full amount, if I recall correctly. Is that how they're doing it?
You know, I might I might defer to Bob or Junie, who are are the board representatives on that. And I I'm getting a chat note here from my staff. It is it is part of their CIP planning. And I I'm not sure if they if they bank it up, but I've I've seen it in our CIP in certain years. There's there's an amount.
Yeah, okay. Well, I was just curious about how how that works into our our planning. But it sounds like it's all that they're they're at the table, basically. And and then my other question is about the the timing and the plan for coming back to council with respect to costs. Because as you just mentioned a little while ago, that if you see the cost starting to go up, you need to come back to council and, you know, and raise the flag. So what is the plan there? And and how does that work into meeting scheduling? And my if it's necessary to have like a special meeting because our calendar's full and we have to talk about this. I'd just like to have an idea of what the the planning there is in terms of the costs.
Sure. And and going back to the question on the Mile High Flood District. So every year when we do our budget, the capital improvement projects are a huge element across all of our utilities of our overall funding needs. And so when we show our fund balance for the flood utility, we we know what we're getting from the Mile High Flood District and which projects they're allocated and what year we're going to get them. And so when we bring our our budget and our rate proposals forward for council approval, those are factored in in there and and those contributions are are part of our bottom line that we that we count on. As far as when council would know if if there was an issue with the costs and how it relates to these negotiations, I I would echo what Sam said. It is a big part of the discussions with the university, and it's something that we hope to resolve before council has to take action on this annexation agreement later in the year. So that that is our our project team, our whole project team, including Phil's goal of working through some of those creative ideas that we're throwing around with the university around Phil and and what options we might have. So i- i- if I I think we have to dig deeper into those discussions and negotiations before we would come back to council. So Sam or Rachel, I don't know if you have a a a thought on that. But sometime in the next couple of months, I think you would hear from us if if we saw that there was a big problem with costs or resolving them.
Yeah, thank you. And and then just finally, just a comment about as we're going through these negotiations and hoping that as we do that, that we're connecting the dots on things where the city doesn't want to pay for this and the university doesn't want to pay for that. How can we connect those two to maybe even come up with some sort of bartering situation where where we can, you know, we can do a win-win sort of connection there? So to keep in mind where those things are happening so that if there's some serendipity that they can be connected and we can save some money there, I I think we should be looking for that.
Definitely. I think it's in both the university's and the and the city's interest to keep working on these costs. As I I think it's a big factor in getting community support as well.
Exactly. So thank you for that, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mary. I've got Adam and then Rachel. Adam?
Yeah, I have a quick question about dirt. How is the negotiating process for the dirt going to work? Because that's not something I've actually heard a lot about. Who gets to control? Who buys the dirt? Who sources the dirt? It's a dirty sort of situation.
So I I I think as it stands, it's our our project is changing the floodplain. And the concept is that we we would place it as part of the as part of the project, the city would. But I think when we when we get down to it, and it's probably going to be cost that is among the last issues that we're we're working on with the university. Somebody said earlier tonight, nothing's been agreed to yet, so it's kind of all on the table how how that's going to work.
Gotcha. I just don't want to run into a situation where CU gets to choose where the dirt comes from. And then the dirt comes at a substantially higher price for no apparent reason or someone gets favoritism in sourcing the dirt, something along those lines. I just want to make sure we make it a transparent and, you know, easy-to-follow process. Also, you said you're trying to think of all the creative solutions you can. I'll just provide one comment that, you know, seems to make sense if we have any really excavation-intensive projects for flood mitigation or anything else that we could line up with this to try to do that as best as possible. If this is actually, you know, what we decide to go forward with eventually. Or if we need to have a dirt drive, let's let's do it.
But we we definitely do that in our in all of our projects. If there are sources for things and there's synergy between projects to to use materials from one area to another, we do that. The contractors that that work on our projects are creative in sourcing materials. So that'll definitely be in the conversation.
Great. Rachel?
Well, just to follow up on Adam's point there, obviously, that's part of why we're talking about looking at maybe just one hundred years worth of dirt rather than five hundred years, because that's less dirt that would be required there. And also that if the berm comes down, it's just so close to it that that would be really nice to be able to just shuttle it right over to the filter. And I don't know how much synergy is is an option there. But just to say that we're definitely thinking about dirt and thinking about making dirt cheap. And also just wanted to say, from my perspective or my understanding, is we've heard many people say, why can't you do a land swap? And, you know, the the shorter answer is we can't do that right now. But I don't think we're precluded from doing it in the future if people wanted to. If it was a a win-win for the city and CU, I don't think anything about this annexation means that we couldn't come back to each other in in one, three, or five, ten years and say, actually, that's better. So just putting it out there, I don't I don't think that doing this annexation forecloses of of us looking at the planning reserve area down the line. And then also just wanted to ask procedurally, Sam, might it make sense to invite Derek or Abby to respond to anything tonight so that we don't get back into negotiations and wish that we had had something lifted up to all of council from their perspective? So.
It's a good idea. I'll I'll come back to everybody's staff from CU and the city once we're finished. So, yeah. Mark?
Just one more question about dirt for Joe. Seems to be the the main topic. The berm is the berm. It it's just sort of sitting there. Do we know enough about it yet to get a a really a firm estimate as to what it would take to deconstruct that berm? Since we're talking about cost, is that a cost we could actually ascertain?
Yes, and I don't personally have the details of all those those types of things. But Brandon Coleman, our project manager, is is thinking about that and working on it. I asked him about the the material from the levee and could that be used in the in the fill? And definitely a thought that it could be used in our earthen embankment for the dam itself. There the there is not a significant amount there to to really make a huge dent in the fill placement that we're talking about. But it all helps and and sourcing what's available on site from our excavation area and and from the the levee would be potential options.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And then I'll come back to you, Adam. I'll let you kick us off with anything else that council wants to ask about or make comments about.
Yeah, I want to talk very briefly about the fire station. Kicking off with the understanding that Mark and I went and visited Fire Station Number Four. And I think we were both pretty blown away by what it is. And so, yeah, I just wanted the three very brief two-sentence answers to these three questions you have on this fire station slide. And if you need me to read them, I I can do that.
It it's slide number thirty, if you want to put those up. And and I think maybe staff could kick us off with the first one. How did the discussion start?
Yeah, I I do have talking points from our fire chief, but to not do not to read through those for two minutes. The discussion started when we made our initial response response to the annexation application in twenty nineteen. We identified that there's just an opportunity for collaboration between the city and the university on something here. It seemed like a mutually beneficial arrangement to have additional capacity in South Boulder. And then also, it's benefit for the university to have a closer fire station too. And so it seemed like a win-win situation that the university was open to. It progressed throughout the the year or so, and and they ultimately had made a firm offer of two acres of land. And so in practice, I think we annex the site if it's annexed with that arrangement. And then there needs to be further analysis by our public safety personnel and others to figure out what makes sense there. But again, it doesn't require us to close Station Four. Insurance rates, there was some discussions around whether or not they will incre- increase insurance rates. And so without the talking points in front of me, I would say, in general, it's the city doesn't have as many, as much leverage or influence over the rates of insurance, but makes decisions to increase coverage and ultimately in which the actions cumulatively will ultimately decrease insurance rates. If that makes sense.
Yeah, that's that's all I needed. And just for anyone who doesn't know, Fire Station Number Four is a relatively small, single-family home with a glorified RV garage that houses our our fire engines. So it seems very insufficient for what the the needs of Boulder are.
Yep, I think that's an understatement. So anything else, Adam? Any other council folks want to ask questions, raise issues?
If I could just say one thing, sort of, yeah. I I think it's important to recognize that a lot of community members don't want anything here at all. Like, we get emails saying that all the time. And I totally understand that. I probably fit in that sort of group of people that doesn't ultimately want to see anything here. But I also understand that there are competing needs in the community. And to work on a good faith basis to try to find the best solution to those competing needs is super important. So just understand, community-wide, that your input is being heard. And we still have a process here that we have to go through to make sure that we're sussing out the best solution for the problems we have here. So just wanted to say that.
Adam? Okay, I don't see any other council hands, so I'll turn first to our staff. Anything else that you want to ask us or want to let us know? Any responses?
No, we will be working. We appreciate Aaron and and Mark helping us out with the process committee. And so we'll work with them on some scheduling matters. With the cost, I think there's a lot to chew on with the questions around cost. And if that's more focused on utilities and flood mitigation, or is there additional information around financial modeling with development activities and things like that that we have not done? But instead of relying on impact fees. And so I think as we're leading up to that study session, we'll try to figure out a way to understand council's expectations for what that should look like and what sort of analysis should be completed.
Okay, thanks for that. Now, I'll turn to CU. Derek, any anything you want to leave us with? Any answers you want to give or comments?
Sure, thank you, Sam. I'll say something and then I'll turn it over to Abby to see if she has anything to add. But I would say that based on the conversation tonight, what we've heard, this has been very good information for us to hear. And I think that we are optimistic that we're all working in good faith to reach an agreeable solution to 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 this transaction, to find out how we can get annexation, how we get flood mitigation, how we can make all this work in a way that will work for both the city and CU. And so really appreciate your efforts. And yeah, yeah, this has been very, very positive meeting for us to be involved in.
Thanks, Derek. And yeah, I'm I'm not used to introducing myself at the end of a meeting, but I will, because I haven't met all of you. My name's Abby Benson, and I know many of you know Frances Draper, who has been working on this project for a long time and recently retired. So I'm attempting to step in her very large shoes and and help work with Derek and the rest of the university to move this project forward. And I just want to echo what Derek said. I think this has been really useful to hear your direction and the comments. I think, you know, we're very optimistic about the progress that's been made and have appreciated the commitment of staff and council to to work together. I, Sam, I agree with you. I think costs are going to be a big issue, so I look forward to digging in on that so that we can make sure that we're, you know, bringing an agreement to the campus leadership and also our Board of Regents, who have the fiduciary responsibility for the university that we can all come to agreement on. But it's it's important for life and safety, and it's important for the university and our future. So look forward to the opportunity to keep the discussions going. So thanks for letting us be here tonight.
Super. Well, thank you for being here. To CU, staff, thank you for a very good presentation on a very complicated subject. Thanks for breaking it down into chunks that we can manage in our heads. I will echo what Adam said. I've been doing a lot of that lately. I I think that this is a project that has a lot of disparate interests involved. Life safety, first and foremost, how this floodway fits into our management. We are a city with the highest flood risk of. First and foremost, how this floodway fits into our management. We are a city with the highest flood risk of any major city in Colorado. So we have to recognize that being situated right up against the flat irons is beautiful, but it also has the. Issue that we have drainage ways that come into our city from those mountains and we have to manage that risk. So. I think all of us on council recognize that in a perfect world, we'd all have open space outside of our back door. And we are working with the university to come up with a deal that is fair and does the best job possible. Of preserving open space both for recreational use and for the natural and environmental values that that we care about so much. But sometimes, you know, when you have competing interests, the job of government is to balance those competing interests. In a way that gives everybody the most that they can get in a deal. And so that's what we're working on. We're working very hard to. Listen to input from the community to help us do the best job we can at that. So it is a complicated. Difficult project. It's got a long history and we are working as hard as we can to make sure that we represent. The interests of the whole city as best as we can. So with that, if I don't see any more comments. I don't see any. I'll say thank you again to staff and council and everyone. Have a good night.
Night, everyone.